Good morning. It is July 23rd, 2024, and I welcome you to the regular meeting of the Clickatack County Commissioners. Let the record show that all three Commissioners are in session, and it will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the business agenda.
Did everyone comment? I had staff add-on discussion for the life insurance, the new life insurance policy under new business. I don't know if you want to do it under new business, or now that I see there's an HR update at 10:15, whether you wanted to just cover it then? Either way, I'm fine. So we can just scratch that? Other than that, I'm fine with the business agenda unless you guys have changes.
I have the same thing with battery storage. I think we could cover that under the Planning Department, as I see Scott skipping an update that time, too.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on, the credit card acceptance under unfinished business.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Meeting minutes.
Did you have any issues with either of them? Or should I take it? Can I take it in one motion?
Fine with me.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from July 2nd and July 9th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we're to the portion of our meeting for public comment. If you're in the room and raise your hand and we call on you, please come to the table, and if you can give us your name and where you're from, that helps us keep the record. And the same for Zoom. We'll wait to see who's on Zoom and raises their hand, and we'll call on you. Okay, so anyone in the room? Everybody always waits for Zoom, and on Zoom this morning.
I think everybody wants to be last and not first.
It's hard always to be the first one.
We would, we used to sit here when it was half an hour, and we would wait for 25 minutes, and then everybody would want to speak in, in the last five minutes.
Okay, there we have Gabrielle Gilbert. Good morning.
Yes, hi. I would like the Commissioners to get a chance to look at the Columbia Gorge paper. There's an article about Wasco County and their work with youth and teens, and how they're going to open up a teen center, activity center, using grant dollars from federal and local. And they interviewed students, and what they found in this group that worked with them was that the broader environment and societal issues that impact youth, access to activities, that the youth would describe there's nothing to do. It is important for the county Commissioners, in my view, to understand your role in leadership, and how you're going to build infrastructure for families, children, and youth, and how you're going to address that as a core function that you yourselves as leaders would actually create. I don't want, I honestly find it so frustrating to listen to some of the excuses that come off of this board about why we are not moving to address the issues of childcare and youth services, and how we can wring our hands and clutch our pearls about drug addiction, about kids ending up in juvie, about families not being able to find childcare, about the economic impact of that, and for you not to have a clear vision and leadership on how you're going to change what's happening on the ground, because you are the power structure. I'm happy to be a delegate. I already have a state law. You know, to get a state law, it actually, you have a, you have a chance of making that successful by less than 20%. So I know what it means to call up elected officials and say, "Hey, this is what's happening in our community, and this is what needs to change, and this is how people are being affected." And I honestly, the noise around childcare is exhausting. You've already identified county workers who have at least 40 children that require. I don't understand why that number doesn't move you to do something, and I don't want to hear any more noise around the reason why you don't. And so I'm asking you to become leaders and to find those solutions. And let be, let's be clear, it's a $60 million budget you address, and you sit in a $20 million building. And I think that the children and the youth and the families of this county deserve better. So I would love to work with you, and I am happy to stand in this place to keep driving the point to you that you need to do something. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Gabby. Back in the room. It works, so.
It doesn't beep anymore?
No, it does music. I'm sorry. You got lost.
Oh, I thought her phone was making music.
Last week it was doing that with 255. It's like a five-minute warning kind of a scenario, just started doing it. This time it, I was curious, and it waited right.
Is it because we added a timer in front on the video?
And nobody did it, so I don't know what happened. Anyone in the room this morning like to give public comment? Good morning. How are you, Candy?
They might not like my comment.
No, we always enjoy you visiting.
Candy from Goldendale. First of all, I do not want, and I do not understand why my tax money should go to somebody else's childcare. I had to pay for my own childcare. My granddaughter, I raised her. I paid for her childcare. The trouble with a lot of these kids right now is the state laws. They cannot work. We always had a job. Probably every one of you had a job. And, and here's the state, "Oh, I can't even hire your own child to work." You can't pay them under the table. So this is what's wrong with our kids. You say they have nothing to do. Yeah, you're right. They have nothing to do. They can't go mow lawns. They can't go work for the neighbor. So let's get back to reality, guys. I don't want to pay for somebody else's childcare. I have, I'm retired. I'm on a limited income. Let's figure out something else.
Thank you. Zoom this morning. Anyone else online? Raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. Unmute yourself. Everybody's quiet this morning. Back in the room. Anyone would like to come forward and?
0088.
There we go, 0088.
Yeah, this is Delmer Eldred, Goldendale. And I don't know if you guys are really taking that serious or not, but I know a guy in Portland, him and his wife ran childcare, and you have no idea the expenses, the supplies, the medical people that you have to have on hand. And some of, when you say daycare, that's just during the day. But when you say childcare, those, those kids will be there overnight on the weekends, and it gets real expensive, the insurance and everything. I don't know where the county could even begin to come up with the amount of money, because you're going to have to build a, a special building that has all the safety protocol that's required for childcare. But, you know, my wife, when we got married, she had a a very, would, would have turned out, it was a very good job, which would have turned out to be a very high-end job. But when we decided to have children, we had to downsize, and she quit her job, and she stayed home and raised the kids. I mean, when you're going to have children, you have to make a choice how you're going to take care of them. And it's not up to the county, for the county to take money from me so other people can have children. That, you know, that's a responsibility that you got to assume when you decide you're going to have a family. But if the county really looked into all the expenses that are involved, the amount of supplies, the people that you've got to have on hand, and the liability that's involved in it, I think you would back away from it, because that is up to people that want to set that up. And if the state didn't have all the regulations, there would be private daycare for these kids. But when the state over-regulates, regulated them out of business and over-tax them, then they can't afford to do it, and I don't know where the county can afford to do it either. But anyway, that's, I, I just hope you aren't really considering moving into the childcare thing, because you're going to have to have a, at least a four or $5 million a year budget for that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And he didn't get music. He didn't get any music. Oh, okay, great. Back in the room. Mr. Smith?
Later, Captain. I know I did goose-like huckleberry fishing.
Good. Did you find huckleberries?
Oh, I did.
Good.
Along with everybody else out there was combat huckleberry picking. Andrew Smith, Clickatack County. So I noticed that we had a radio interview going on, jail. So let's talk about the jail real quick. I've been through multitudes of jails. I've had plenty of friends up there at Yakima Jail. More complaints than I've ever heard. Jail down here is more safer than the jail up there in Yakima County. After spending a tour here, a tour up there, tour in multitudes of jails, this is the most safest jail I've ever seen. Inmates are all locked in. Other jails, they let them run free in daylight hours. So the big question is, if we're going to do DOC, is this going to be a county, state, or federal level DOC? And the money that I can see is going to be expensive, no matter how we do this. So we're going to take the power away from the sheriff, have our own DOC. So we're paying lots of more head-out money, and then medical's always going to be there. I understand we have one registered nurse that comes in and pass out pills, and that's about it. So has the board been in contact with DOC? Has DOC checked out the jail? Has DOC talked to the sheriff about this? And has the DOC talked to any of you, three of the, three of the board members here? Okay? And what's your comments on it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, back online. Good morning, Pat Arnold.
Good morning. I just wanted to say that I think that some of the people who just spoke are misunderstanding what Gabe is talking about. She was talking in part about a youth center. That was the article that she recommended that you read, which is an activity center that would be open daytime. And there's a lot of facets to childcare, so I think that the talk about, "Well, I don't want to pay for somebody else's childcare," and focusing on a daycare facility is I can see that, of course. I think that Gabe was trying to, to say to you guys. And also think that she pointed out there's probably, I don't know this, but I'm sure she does, a lot of grant money, and one thing and another, that could help with some of the expenses. So, and I would like to point out that the two people who don't want to pay for other people's daycare, I think it's their responsibility or something. Sometimes things happen that you don't anticipate. People get laid off. People lose their jobs. I mean, illness, all kinds of things that lead, lead people to need daycare and need to work that a single, you know, it's not always possible for people to be in a two-parent household, and even when that is possible, sometimes it's not economically feasible to do that. So I, I, I really urge you to think calmly about this and not get caught up in the kind of emotional visceral response that people have to the idea of daycare. There, there probably are some ways that, some things the county could do. And, you know, this is Gabe's issue, not mine, but, but I support what she said, and I, and, and yes, there's a role for leadership here. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Back in the room. No one wish to go comment? So, online, is anyone else wanting a little bit of time this morning? 2662.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tracy from Lisle. And I am a little bit disappointed with the Commissioners today. On Friday, CenturyLink held their, their hearing to be deregulate, to deregulate, be less regulated, which means that everybody's landlines that are with CenturyLink will be probably no longer a service that they offer. And the Commissioners were two different public meetings. I heard people talking about it. And a letter was not written, you didn't have any attendance, and there were no comments from the county Commissioners. And I just, I'm disappointed that there was no support for the people that can't have cell phone coverage, because either there, there are no towers, no cell service in their area, and some of them, that's the only way that they can connect to the internet, which is, you know, it's a vital, important thing to be able to connect to the internet, especially when you had it and it's taken away. So that being said, so if landlines are deregulated and, or CenturyLink's deregulated, and landlines go away, that, that brings up cell coverage. Well, cell, cell phones are not regulated. And during the Mosher fire yesterday, I was with a couple of friends that had an AT&amp;T and a Verizon phone, and they couldn't make calls. And so what it turned out to be, at least that's what we understand it to be, is that the emergency responders were using those lines and have priority over the lines. And so when they have priority over the lines and there's no more data, then the phones don't work. Anyway, something to consider when Jeff King asks for more phone grants and things like that, is are they taking priority lines? Are they leaving some for the people? And then the second thing I'd like to talk about is the town hall meeting. So the town hall meeting that you did help, hold, was well-received. It was well-attended. And Dan Christopher was supposed to come up with another one, and I understood it to be canceled, but I haven't heard of any others. You guys aren't doing Thursday workshops. Why don't you have a town hall? And then the last thing is the Senate Bill 6164. I haven't heard that brought up. That's the one that, that hap, that there needs to be public meetings when there's a emergency or a disaster or declaration, that the emergency management needs to have public, public meetings. And I just wondered if you could touch on that. Senate Bill 6164, and I hope through the conversation about the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. So back in the room. Good morning, Adrian Bradford.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just responding to the last call. I live in Lisle, and I suffer, and my drivers of our trucks suffer every time they drive through Lisle for lack of service and the internet. They, I think the problem is it's, it's a dead zone in downtown Lisle, one of the prime growth towns in the county, and it can't get internet. And I think the reason is most of the towers are up on the school, which is a lot higher than the highway. It's a lot higher than two-thirds of the town. And those towers, I think, get it, but it just, the beams don't come down to the highway. And I get truckers, my own truckers, about every hour with an "OS." "There goes my internet," and then they get up to the Clickatack River and it's active again. So whatever the county can do, I know broadband is focused on the wilderness, but Lisle is an internet wilderness, which is really hardly imaginable and not acceptable. So thank you for your help.
Thank you, Adrian. Good morning, Roger Nichols.
Hello there. I just want to do a compliment to have the clock available on the front of the desk. Nice work, guys. It's very appreciated.
That's your comment? That's awesome. Thank you. Anyone else online? Oh, there we are. Good morning, Mr. Rizzi.
Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, I want to make, this is Anthony Rizzi, taxpayer and voter out of Dallasport. I want to bring up, once again, I know that it was brought up this morning again about the jail. I'm just appalled that with the jail, again, the only reason you guys are doing this is to take the power and the jail away from the sheriff. Well, that's just a snub on your own selves, because, and you're pushing it very quickly, because you want to get it done before Commissioner Jake Anderson is no longer on the board, because you know that you're going to have new people on the board that may or may not agree with you and stop this whole thing. So now that you've railroaded the DOC to get that started, you're kind of stuck, because you're going to be paying a heck of a lot more. I'm sorry. I, I keep asking for numbers. I never see the numbers. If you left the jail the way it was under the sheriff, his vehicles, his people to do all the administrative, which you're already paying for, you would have been just fine. All you had to do was pay for two more, two more regularly there nurses, or a PA or whatever, but according to other counties that have the same setup, they pay about $550,000 a year for that. So if you took a 1.8 you're paying now, add 550, you're at 2.3. And I guarantee, when you get through with adding the DOC, you're going to find out that you're going to pay another million dollars over that to have this done, because you have, you're setting up a whole nother branch of government, and you're just going to be wasting our taxpayer money, and our taxpayers are going to have to take on the brunt of all this because of what you guys have started out of spite. It's very upsetting that you would even think about doing this. We're running out of money, and, and Jake said, "Oh yeah, no, we're good on money." Well, no, look at our budget process and wait till this budget process is finished, and you'll see how much money that this extra is going to cost us. Please give us the numbers so that we can look at it and say, "No, you guys were wrong." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzi. Back in the room. Anyone? Online? We're getting close to the end of our time, I think. Is there anyone else that would like time online this morning? And one more time in the room? Anyone else wish to speak this morning? So maybe it's time we change over and close public comment and move to Commissioners.
I'm taking a couple notes real quick.
I will go first again. I guess we'll just discuss childcare all in one, because there's about five comments on it. My position, I don't think government should be in charge of operating childcare. I think private entities did a wonderful job with it when they weren't over-regulated to high heaven, forcing them into bankruptcy. And the state can fix that by deregulating all the over-regulation that they put in place on child cares, and they would pop back up and open right back up, just like if you go to Idaho, you can drive down the road and there's a kitty carer on about every other block, because they don't have the over-regulation. With that, I do believe the county does have a place in supporting youth centers. And I've been a proponent of supporting youth centers across the county since day one, and I still agree with that. Comment on Department of Corrections. There was a question again, is it going to be a county, federal, or state-level DOC? It's a county-level DOC. Has the DOC talked to us? It isn't, it's not that we would be talking to the state or federal Department of Corrections. It's County Department of Corrections that we're making, so we would essentially be talking to ourselves when that eventually happens. Tracy, about the landline service issue, we are well aware. We had instructed Economic Development to draft a letter with our opposition or our concerns. They returned that letter to us to show us what it looked like. We all agreed to it. We all signed it. It should have been submitted. I will have to double-check to make sure it was submitted, but it is my understanding that we are on record on that issue. Town halls, yes, I'm still a firm believer that we need to have town halls. As soon as this board gives me a second vote, we'll, we'll have another one. But until I get a second vote, we will not have another one. Adrian, yes, I'm well aware of the lack of service in Lisle. There's more to that story that maybe we should have a discussion sometime. I won't tarnish this board with having that discussion right now. Mr. Nichols, yes, I agree with you. The clock is wonderful, because now people can look at the minutes and see when there was a discussion had, and go fast-forward the video, and not have to waste their time sitting through or scanning back and forth. I think it's, you know, 10 bucks saves people a lot of time. Mr. Rizzi, I agree with you that it could be an extra $1 million. The way I look at it is it's somewhere between $500,000 and 1.2 million extra. I, I have a worry, and my forethought is pretty good. I trust it pretty well. I would argue that right now, the current motivation is to keep the county jail open. But I would, a little piece of me is tingling back here with that forethought, that maybe, just maybe, if we can make it cost so damn much to keep the jail open, it will make perfect sense to go back to the original plan of closing it down and sending it to North Carolina. So I worry that there may be motivation as we start going through that budget that leads us down that path. And I have grave concerns on that. But I think it's, there's no doubt it will cost extra. It's just a matter of how much extra. We may find that out when we make the budget this year, and we may not know the consequences until we get the actual numbers of a year at the end of next year. So, yeah, I kind of where I'm at on that, and that's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. You answered many of the questions that I'd planned on and took notes on. Ms. Gilbert and Candy, I hear both of you, both, what people are asking for is the leadership. What this board has done has been a part of the Childcare Committee. I can agree with Commissioner Christopher that childcare is not a core county function. It's not something It's not something that, uh, the legislature directs us to spend your tax dollar, taxpayer dollars on. Uh, with that, it is imperative that there is childcare within Clickitat County so that people can go to work and people can hold jobs and we can keep the community together. So of course we want to support that. Uh, we want to support that any way we can. Uh, we had the Small Business Development, uh, center person, um, do a full business analysis on creating a childcare facility. And whether it would be county run or privately run, the problem is, is that with all the rules and regulations Commissioner Christopher was talking about, it could cost, somebody has to supplement it to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And I think that was for forty-ish, forty to fifty kids. Five hundred thousand dollars a year is the cost. Uh, we don't have that kind of money at the, at the county level. The grants, it's easy to get grants to build things. It's a lot more difficult to get grants that you're going to have to spend every year. Um, and you know, those costs, those are operating costs of five hundred thousand dollars for forty kids. And you start piecing that together, that's a lot of money per child. Um, especially when it's not a core county function. So I can, I can agree 100% with Commissioner Christopher. This is, this is an issue that has started at the state level. And it was like many things at the state level started with good intentions. Nobody wants to see a kid die because of the blinds or because of something else. And so what we've done is because every time something bad happened, we passed another law and another rule and another regulation to the point where now, I mean, most people do have childcare. They're not in certified registered childcare facilities. They're in your neighbor's house or somebody else's house that has more kids than would be allowed because they've got to make it pencil out for them and their family. And we do need to fix that. The sad thing is, is it's not the Board of County Commissioners that can fix that. That's a state issue. And, um, I wish there was more we can do. Uh, we've advocated to our legislators, uh, um, Ms. Gilbert has advocated to the legislators to change it. Uh, and I'll be frank with everybody. It's really hard to try to change the law when somebody on the other side goes, oh, so you're going to reduce regulations and it's going to kill a kid? Because that's exactly how you stop legislation from moving forward that we all agree with. And, uh, I can also agree with you 100% Candy. Uh, it's impossible to hire children anymore. The liability insurance of what you have, and then they can't do anything. My son can't run a lawnmower. My son can't work on the farm. He can't run a tractor. He can't do anything. Uh, I was raised at the, the firm belief that you have a sense of work ethic by the time you're five years old. And if you don't, you probably won't have one by the time you're 25. And so I absolutely believe and understand what you, what you, the point you brought up. So no, you didn't piss me off in any way. Uh, Dan, you, you, you very clearly, uh, made it that it's the county DOC. And staff has talked to the state DOC. Staff has been in contact with state DOC on multiple occasions because we have to interface with DOC when any, anything goes. There's all sorts of things that are happening behind the scenes that involve numbers and regulations and all this stuff in order to stand it up. So yes, those conversations are taking place. Um, if you'd like more information, um, I'll direct you to talk to Mr. Van Cleve to get your specific answers to any of those questions you have. And, uh, Tracy, that letter, uh, was drafted July ninth by Economic Development to the UTC. Um, it may not have been included in their packet, but it was sent to UTC. Um, Adrian, what cell service are you having issues with? On my AT&amp;T works fine through Lyle. I lose service by Doug's Beach. And that's just, we're coming up the hill that you have dead zones everywhere. Okay.
Some people worse than afford Starlink, which is fantastic, but that's not a solution for everybody.
But you're talking specifically cell service. Most people don't use Starlink for their cell service.
Well, I do.
For your cell service?
AT&amp;T, but their costs of how, how, so I just don't accept AT&amp;T anymore.
So you're, you're using it for your internet service at home or something, not while you're moving? Oh, while you're moving, you're using Starlink Internet? Oh, okay. Good to know.
May I make a point with that, Jake? This is Tracy from Lyle.
I'm sorry, Tracy, out of order.
Okay.
Thank you.
The question on costs on the jail. No matter what we do, if we keep this jail here in Clickitat County, it's going to cost more money. No matter what. And that is because changes are going to have to be made in the jail. And we will be hearing a jail update soon from, uh, Director Van Cleve. We have someone from the insurance pool who's doing a full jail analysis. We'll have recommendations that will probably have operational changes as well as capital changes. It will cost more money. Um, and that's just a fact of the matter. What those costs will be, we need to wait until we get that report back from the people from, that are doing that report. Um, but I've never been under the impression that it will cost less money to, to house people in Clickitat County. I know Carmen made the comment that other jails with, um, close to the same beds as ours are spending almost five million dollars a year on their jail. Um, could that be the number? I, I don't know. I need to, I need the information from the people who are doing it to, to come up with those, those true costs. But that's the fact of the, fact of the matter. But I will say, it's not the sheriff's vehicles. It's not the sheriff's money. It's the taxpayers' money. It's all of our money. It's all of our costs. When something bad happens, it's all of us that have to pay. Whether the insurance pays out today on a claim or tomorrow on a claim, it all comes from the same place because we have to pay the insurance premiums. It's just holdout over time. Um, and it's whether it's just us in Clickitat County or we're part of a pool and it's all the taxpayers of Clickitat County. And so that's why we have to make sure that we're, you can never eliminate liability, but we can reduce it as much as possible so that we can reduce the cost to the taxpayers over the long term. I think we're all set up here are fiscally and financially frugal. With that, I'll leave the rest of the time to you.
Madam Chairman, I have one more comment on childcare. Agreeing with Mr. Anderson, just stipulating a little better. When Mr. Anderson said that, uh, we did the analysis and it was five hundred thousand dollars for forty kids. Uh, he is 100% correct. Uh, but I wanted to make it clear that was with the use of state grants. Uh, that was with a building that the county already owned and didn't have to go get a new one, which currently that building now holds our mental health department. So there would need to be a building along with it. And it would have, uh, charged the people that were putting kids in the system about a thousand dollars a month per kid. Uh, and with all of that, it was still five hundred thousand a year. So just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And I do think my seatmates pretty well covered everything today and I agree with their comments. Um, it is too bad what's happening to all of us on many, many levels. And it's a society shift that we don't all agree with. It's hard to raise families. It's hard to have both people working in your family so you can afford this economy. And regulation shifts are killing us. And so it took us a while to get here. It's going to take us a while to go back the other way. And I'm so hoping for that pendulum to swing. Uh, but it's not that we don't engage in thoughts or work for childcare or for youth centers. Uh, we do what we can do and we have engaged with Leslie and Airmore in the past. We do try to do what fundings we can do and we support people that come forward, uh, looking for avenues, however we can help them. Um, but our hands are tied and, uh, we can do what we do. And as we move forward and push, we'll just keep pushing that bar back and take back our healthy communities and our families. So, uh, with that said, um, I think I will leave the rest of the comments to my seatmates and we'll move on.
Madam Chair, I move that we pass the consent agenda with, sorry, I move that we pass a consent agenda with three items, pulling item number three to be voted on right after the, the vote on the first three.
Oh, second to motion.
Uh, motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we pass Consent Agenda item number three.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, uh, all those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. I'm sorry.
You, you might want to answer before I vote no. Um, I do support using Proffman. Um, I do not support the language. Um, that still has the Norcore part in it. Uh, it's probably not a surprise, just wanted to be on record with it. I will be a no vote, but I do support the use of Proffman.
Would you like to make a change to the language?
I, I think at this point to change the language that we're all aware of in there about the, the Norcore part of it. If, if the board wants to hold off and make the change, that's fine. I don't find that holding off the Proffman would be a good idea. And I don't think the language is going to change because the language is the language because of the motion. Um, that there's still a possibility to close the jail. So unless the board is going to remove the possibility to close the jail, you're not going to change the, the language of the problem. So. And I don't see the board doing that. So let's just, you know, I, I have it two to one and move on.
Well, and we did have this week to submit comments back to staff to change that. But, um, so this is the draft that came.
Well, I, I can't advise staff to change anything with one vote.
No.
So I bring it up for discussion because everything we do should take two votes to have a staff do anything.
I am not seeing anything in the, the Proffman letter that says anything about Norcore.
There was an email that was, uh, received from staff that created the document.
But what's on the table for our vote is the agreement as is, correct?
Yeah, there's nothing that says anything that I can find out about Norcore. Which email are you talking about?
Well, and essentially I don't think the email would matter. The discussion is the document in front of us.
You're talking about the challenges and opportunities that, um, Director Van Cleve sent out?
Mm-hmm.
I think that was just an overview from staff, um, that was a draft that absolutely we can have a conversation with Director Van Cleve about that doesn't need to be included in there. That was just a draft from staff, but that has nothing to do with the actual Proffman agreement.
I understand the Proffman agreement is the Proffman agreement. It's a matter of what's going to be used as the wording to recruit. And that wording is still going to be in that wording recruit, which is why I said I agree with using Proffman. I just agree, disagree with the wordage that will be used for recruit.
Right, which we have a conversation with Director Van Cleve that can change that wording, but you still agree with the agreement of Proffman.
I have no further discussion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
You need to ask for those opposed.
Those opposed.
Me.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, and note that there are no payroll benefit warrants for the date ending July twenty-second, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Department update with Scott Edelman from our planning department. Thank you so much, Scott.
Oh. I always think that too. Did you wave? I do too.
So good morning, Commissioners. I saw on the agenda that the, uh, my update is the, uh, further discussion on the proposed moratorium. I did not have a lot of time this week to work on it this past week because of other priorities, but I tried to go through my notes. Um, this has not changed much since the last meeting. The, if I understood correctly from last meeting, there were no issues raised about the battery energy storage systems. The conversation seemed to be focused on the language with the, uh, a part that had to do with storage of batteries. So if you see on the second page, that's what I put in, um, was some numbers that we could potentially change or at a point placeholders. I'd like to get this to the, uh, PA for review, um, their office. I didn't want to send it to them if we, until we knew for sure we were going to include this, um, aspect of it. And if, if this was the way we wanted to do it. So I took out any reference to cumulative voltage. Appreciate the correction. That wasn't the way to do it. Um, it seemed like math to me, add them up and, and you could, could, uh, say that. But, uh, I put in some of the numbers, I think recommended fifty used or new twelve volt, twenty-four volt and forty-eight batteries, or the storage and warehousing over five hundred smaller voltage lithium batteries. I think it was said that the, the number isn't as big of a deal as just indicating that there's a, a large amount is, is what's not allowed. Um, enforcement, of course, would be an issue. I don't know how, if someone has a storage unit, you get into it, you know about if there's a complaint. But, um, if we have it on the books, it's at least something potentially. I did include that final statement, uh, thanks to, um, one of the comments from the public. I'm not including batteries installed in working equipment because that's not intended to be computers that people actually have. I don't think it's intended to be if somebody has an online business, they somehow come across a thousand cell phones and they have in their house and they're selling them. I don't think that was the intent. I think it was the storage of batteries themselves. So I put that in thinking that that might cover the concern about farm equipment, other equipment that people might have, just actually operational, uh, with batteries in them. I don't think we meant storing them in operational equipment, but I could be wrong. So I just wanted to open this up. I didn't change anything else.
Um, the highlighted section, you have the storage and warehousing of fifty used or new twelve volt, twenty-four volt or forty-eight volt batteries. Um, needs to say lithium ion. Because if you just have standard car batteries, you don't have that problem. Um, so.
Commissioner Christopher, um, lithium ion is just one type of battery. There's also lithium FE, lithium iron. There's a bunch of different lithium style batteries that all have the same possibility. I don't know how you want to deal with that.
Could you simply call it lithium style batteries?
Or ish.
Or batteries containing lithium. I don't care. It just needs to be lithium and not, uh, lead acid. Uh, I, I mean, if somebody wants to store fifty lead acid batteries, it's probably not a great idea, but it's not going to blow up half town or cause mass evacuations, or I don't care about lead acid batteries. Um, so I want to make sure it's a stipulation in there that has lithium as part of it. Um, I understand there's other batteries made out of lithium. They're, they're usually not the ones catching on fire. But if this board wants to make it all lithium, that's fine with me too.
Any other suggestions? Thank you, Scott, for your time on that.
Run it by the prosecutor. See what he says. Sounds good.
Did we want to, um, make a motion today? Of acceptance, run it by the prosecutor for content?
Uh, we've made a motion to do it. Uh, that motion's still current, that motion's still standing. Um, so any other motion you made would be to repeal it, which I don't think we're going to do. So I would be fine with just directing staff to turn it into legal review and keep us posted on, um, when you turned it in and when you get it back. So we know what kind of date range or how long it took over there.
Okay. Thank you. Um, since a few minutes, it was quicker than I thought as far as an update. Um, I'm going to. Um, I've got a personal update, um, after our housing plans fell through that we had in place for a couple of months. Um, just like three weeks ago, um, I had the experience of trying to find a rental property here. And it's a good thing to go through when you're in community development to see what it's like, because it's, it's very tough to find a place to rent. Uh, we were at a point where we were, um, as a, this Friday, we were going to buy an R V and live in that because we couldn't find anything and at all that would fit our family. And that would have meant my oldest son wouldn't live with us, um, which we sure didn't want. Um, last night, got a rental property, um, so very happy to announce that we'll be moving in a week from Friday. Um, second of, of August. Uh, but I do think that's a good experience. Also, building a home, I'm starting, we're starting on the initial stages. And it's really something, in my position, I've never done that, to see the steps, how much everything costs, how much every, you know, all the, the number of times I have to draw a different site plan. It's, it's interesting and it's, I think, a good experience for me.
Why did your, uh, your house fall through? Could you not get a permit from planning for it, or?
No, it's a, yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that, that's not, that's not the reason.
That's not the reason.
No, it's building.
Yeah, I, 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 I worry for you in the house building. Uh, if you haven't gone through that, the stress level of building a house. Uh, I hope you're one that can just like have the contractor like, and, and yeah, guy, you're going to be, and yeah.
Well, I've got a, a great contractor, best in town, and his family, so what could go wrong, right?
It's a great experience and be sure to take pictures from the ground up. I did, and so now I have them in a series out on the wall and it's nice to look back where we came from.
Good idea. Well, thank you.
Glad you found a rental too. That's in this market, it's not easy.
No, it, it wasn't, so I felt very fortunate about that. I'll just mention two other things. We're working on our budget. We've got another cycle of stuff due today. I want to appreciate Debbie, as she's new to it, I'm new to it, so she's really working hard, our office manager. Um, Cindy with building has been a lot of help and really appreciate the cooperation from that. And of course, Jen has given some good guidance for us. Um, finally, I just want to mention, I can't say much about it, but we do have a staff change coming up, just found out this morning. So we're going to, I'm going to work with Rob to put an advertisement out to get somebody hired as soon as possible. Um, that person I'm sure will make their own announcement beyond just our small group, uh, sometime very soon. But that'll be coming.
Thank you.
No questions?
All right, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Um. Yeah, having a brain cramp. Did we do payroll or did we skip payroll?
We did payroll, because I think there was no.
We did payroll.
I, yeah, well, I'm usually, yeah, I didn't do it, so you did it and it kind of, I didn't check it off my card and.
Um, Madam. Madam Chair, um, I'd make a motion that we include the discussion of battery storage moratorium, uh, for the planning department, uh, on the agenda. It was, we didn't have a regular planning meeting. I'm going through the agenda that was posted and it wasn't put on there, so we do need to have it.
Okay. Motion in a second?
Did you make a motion? Yeah, that's fine. I'm second, yeah.
Motion in a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, department update from Jeff Hunter, county engineer. And they're not in the room this morning. Okay, we're a little bit early. I didn't look up at the clock. And we won't slide you in early, Mr. Van Cleve, sorry.
Mr. Van Cleve, is Casey going to be here for your update?
Uh, so anything updates from the board while we're waiting? We have about seven minutes. I attended a good meeting last week with, uh, Rep, Congressman Newhouse in regards to the removal of the Snake River Dam.
Potential removal.
Yeah, potential. It was very, very interesting. It was well-attended. I learned a lot from all different sides. It's going to be an interesting ride to see what happens with that one. And it really relates to our power deficit as it is. It could be a scary world.
It is a scary world.
What else have I been doing?
I don't have anything other than insurance conference leaving till Wednesday, Thursday, Friday morning. Hopefully, when I get back, I have some at least ideas on rate increases for the year, which I don't forecast to be as substantial as they have been. So that's good, but we'll, we'll know more at the end.
Mr. Anderson?
Just to judge on my forethought as I'm guestimating fifteen to eighteen percent, so we'll see how good I am at forethought on that.
Okay, that'll be good. Mr. Hunter?
Headed up that way.
Good morning, Mr. Hunter and Cess Corolla from our Public Works Department.
How many dozers are you going to drive down your pretty road? Which, any, any, any of them, there's lots of pretty roads out there right now. I'm just hoping a dozer don't track down one of them.
Are they east?
On a hundred degree day.
Open the same.
Go right ahead.
Okay, well, we don't have anything on the consent agenda or on payments. Wish I could say that's because we're not doing anything, but that's not true. We're playing regulatory games now with state auditors, working on budget. It's actually probably the busiest time of the year for us, plus we have a couple ongoing contracts. So, uh, yeah, we're pretty busy. With that, we'll turn it over to the construction.
All right, Bickleton area paving, we're still waiting on that final sign placement, so we can finish that project up. Sundale Old Eight, contractors working on excavations and bank construction, pipes and placing some base force rock. White plastic edge lines did get started last week and they're continuing this week. Hopefully we get that finished up. On design end of things, Sunny Side Road overlay, we're still working on stormwater and other design pieces, so we can get that out this fall. Uh, bridge repair bundles consultant continues with their designs and environmental processes. Uh, Bickleton Highway Box Springs vicinity project for next year. Um, just getting the paperwork passed back and forth through Washdott and get those approvals onboard. And the project is pretty much put together. We're just waiting for the approval to go to ad. White plastic edge lines and curb warning signs, these are for future projects. Uh, they're currently being designed as well as the road safety plan update. Need to get a consultant onboard to, uh, complete that project. I think that's it.
That is it. Okay. Main inside, Golddale and Bickleton shops are finishing up their patching. Uh, they're doing some grading on the east end and, uh, preparing to pave east road. There's a section east road that still needs to be paved and then that'll take care of it. I forgot something. Okay. West end, uh, we're finishing brooming the B S T. We broomed for the airport yesterday and, uh, we're installing culverts and helping the east side pave. Upcoming facilities, uh, Sail Barn Punch List walkthrough is tomorrow. If you haven't been up there, it is a very nice facility. Uh, nice and cool in there, um, so there, we're still got other stuff, but we're kind of looking at the main building. Uh, Superior Court remodel, um, finishing woodworking this week. Uh, we're spraying, the contractor is spraying lacquer on Thursday. We're going to try to ventilate. There may be some complaints. We looked at doing it on, uh, weekend. Problem is, due to religious constraints, our contractor does not work Saturdays. So therefore you need two days, so those two days will be Thursday and Friday, because it's the last. They'll spray Thursday, um, but it is an oil-based lacquer. So we're going to try to ventilate the best we can, um, and, uh, and then it'll ventilate the whole weekend. But we'll seal everything up pretty tight and then try to ventilate it out during the weekend. We can secure the building and ventilate it.
Just make sure all the rags are gone too. I don't need any spontaneous combustion.
Okay, um, events, we have the rodeo Bible camp going on today, this week. And, uh, then we're starting for fair preparation. It is a very big event for the rodeo Bible camp. Uh, record amount of kids. I've already reached out to Jeff King and said, let's try to find some other places in case of fire. Uh, Fuel Island's the same thing, electronic security, we're at the, already take care of Beer Garden. We poured the footings, buttoned everything up and will proceed once rodeo Bible camp is done. Uh, they're painting all the, uh, all the columns and, uh, the trusses and everything, so they'll be ready to be placed once they're done. And the only other thing we have for, uh, follow-up is we did flag last night until ten for the fire. So, um, hopefully that gets under control and we will be tied up with that. And, uh, that's all we have.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
You're kind of busy today.
I know, look at us. In and out.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Pretty pictures.
Yep, I will, no, no pictures today. Turn it over to Tater in the game.
I, I will say that I have received a few comments from the general public on the new look of the Lisle boat ramp. They are extremely impressed, extremely grateful. Um, kind of wondering why it took so long, but I didn't have that answer. Uh, but I said, don't look gift-worsted, I'll just be happy it's done. So, uh, yeah, I wanted to pass that on to the public, very appreciative of what you guys did.
We appreciate that. We always say, you know, we can only do what we get board support for. We're supportive on that. We got it done. And, uh, it was relatively inexpensive.
Mm-hmm.
We can actually reuse the material, so that's good, win for both.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
George.
We used to have a sign that says, please silence your phones. We didn't move it when we moved from over there to over here, it's still on the. That and it's usually one of us that has to undergo.
So I guess we're waiting for a second for Human Resources to get together. I did attend a meeting in Vancouver for Columbia Land Trusts last week too. Uh, it's their annual picnic and update, uh, they're a, uh, been a great partner for us for conservation. Uh, they've been very responsible and stuck to their word on conservation issues. And it was a good picnic and we saw the retirement of someone who'd been with them for, I believe, over twenty-five years. Sherry Carney retired, so we'll, we'll miss her. She's been great to work with. And so now we have Human Resources, Mr. Van Cleve.
Good morning.
Casey Sheridan.
I did, uh, inform the corrections staff that, um, the jail update would be as part of this update, so we are starting early. So I'm trying to be mindful of when I give them a general time that we're fairly close to it, so that, um, can stick to my word.
You can talk slow.
You can sing for them.
I can sing for them. Thanks, Casey.
And you can dance along with it.
That's why you're up first. So today's update, um, we're going to start with H R.
Uh, I don't have much, um, a few things to start with. Um, the planning department received a retirement notice. So we are looking for a verbal to post for, we're gonna, um, do a broad post for an assistant associate or senior planner, because that's what the box is. So, uh, it's budgeted, it's not a new position, it's within the department and the organizational, um, chart. So if we could get verbal to post for assistant associate or senior planner, uh, within the planning department because of a pending, well, an announced retirement. So that would give them hopefully time to advertise, get some applications and maybe get it filled to be able to put that person in that position and do a little training for a couple of weeks before they retire.
Do we have a, a date for retirement?
I think, uh, October first, so the end of September, so it's, it'll be soon, so. The cross-training might not happen, but there's fingers crossed, so.
Good, I think you have all three.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, and then I do have, um, at our last update, we had a discussion a little bit about benefits. Um, and so I do have a little bit, um, more information regarding some of that. So as far as our benefits, we are through P E B, through the healthcare authority and the Public Employee Benefit Board. And before we move to P E B, we had a third-party consultant that went out and did bits for us. And we had different medical plans that we got to choose from and dental plans and vision plans and all that fun stuff. And they were able to take the information from the county and our experience rates, which were not good. And they were able to present plans to our benefit committee. And then the committee was able to choose which plans were presented to the employees. To be able to go out and look at different possibilities. Um, looking at our comps, we have, I think there's five or six other counties within our comparables that use P E B. There's other counties that go through trusts. So that is something that, um, if you'd like us to look into further, that we can. Um, it will take some.
I think some of those trusts are associated with their unions. Their union healthcare trust, so.
Um, and that would be the other thing too, that moving forward and looking into different benefit options is, uh, this would be for only regular employees right now, because, um, we would have to, uh, negotiate because of our contracts with our union employees. So to make any changes right now, it wouldn't, it would be for regular employees only, so. So moving forward, we, we can look into other options. But it would take more time and it would be for regular employees only. Union employees, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to go into effect until twenty twenty-six unless you wanted to go into negotiations regarding that.
All right.
Question.
There are other options, um, you know, as far as.
I mean, nothing is a, right.
To.
I do think the board needs to look at every option. But as we're coming to the end of terms, there could be different people sitting here in a few months that aren't interested. So I'd hate to waste your time. Uh, depending on who's sitting here on January first, we might reevaluate is where I'm coming from. I don't know where the rest of the board is coming from, but I'm fine with the knowledge that I've gained.
And I have the selection sheets too, if you guys want that, because it, it kind of breaks it down too, to show you what, what the entire premium is for the different medical plans and what the county pays and what the employee pays. Because, you know, it, it's.
Yeah, but if we, I guess I'd say for me, if we make a change, I don't want to just make a change for non-union employees and not union as well. That's not quite fair.
Right.
So if I was going to make a change, I would set a timeline. I would hope to set a timeline that they go into effect together at the same time, whether that's twenty years from now or, or whenever, so. Uh, but you guys are also very busy with what you're currently doing, so I don't really want to pile a heaping, pile of more work that may not get us anywhere.
If you could share that document with me, I'd like it for education purposes only. Um, and then I have a question. If we change up, what happens to people that are currently in a healthcare situation that are? And then we change our insurance, what happens?
Oh, were they grandfathered in if they had cancer under this insurance? Are they going to be able to get insurance after the next one?
People when we make a change?
So on our current plan, you have your deductibles and your out-of-pocket maxes and those all reset at the end of the year. Um, but.
But if we change providers, what happens?
It, it would, I mean, they wouldn't be denied coverage, yeah, it would just roll over.
But it would change what maybe their benefits are?
Yeah, I mean, you, you.
You couldn't impact them.
That opportunity, or yeah, that chance that.
Okay.
It might have different coverage, that some of those things might not be covered anymore.
Or different co-pays or different.
Yeah, different out-of-pocket expenses, I know, um, so A W C, the twenty twenty-four salary and benefits. The report came out just. Um, the report came out just last week. Um, and so it kind of shows a breakdown of what other counties pay and what their out-of-pockets are and. Um. And deductibles and stuff and um, I know we are very fortunate with, with what we pay for our benefits, but. You look at a family and their out-of-pocket is twelve or fifteen thousand dollars is amazing difficult. For sure.
Challenge tends to be, the reason people go into pools like PEB is because we have roughly, I don't know. Employees independence pick five hundred, right?
So, yeah, so currently I'm looking at like our June numbers, we have five hundred and thirty-eight subscribers under our PEB plan. Two hundred and fifty-one are employees and two hundred and eighty-seven are dependents.
So when you go, when you go out on the market to buy insurance, they're gonna look at, at the usage of those. The five hundred and thirty-eight people and uh, it doesn't take too many significant life events. To raise the premium for the county and the employees. When you get in a pool that's got tens of thousands of doll, of people. Then that swing is less and in. You're right, everything we do, sh- there, there, everything we do should be, can be discussed, everything. Questions can be asked, absolutely agree, everything has a cost and the commissioners, the budget's under your authority. Um, gentle reminder that benefits are extremely controversial with employees and, and uh.
Well, I was, I was more looking at it as like switching our insurance company, save money over there. I was. Enlightened to learn that our. Our score, our ranking is, or was, as not good as it was, which. Pretty much means we're not gonna save any money going somewhere else, so I mean. That surprised me, but that, that in and of itself has kinda changed my whole approach at this.
So our experience in twenty fourteen, before we switched to PEB, our experience rates as a whole for the county. Cause they, they go by, you know, some. We have s- they go by.
Claims.
Yes, and there were some high. High costs, some employees that, yeah, it, it, it was a lot.
Well, I, I had a hundred thousand doctor bill and a hundred thousand dollar lifeline that they paid for, so. I'm, I'm one of your points.
Exactly, that's the perfect example. So in twenty fourteen, we switched to PEB for. Well, it was one month and then January first, twenty twenty-five, we went to PEB. And in November of twenty fourteen, we had seventeen selection sheets. Because we had to figure out a way that we could make. The plans work for our employees to where we had current employees and new employees, so we had a base rate. That we were able to use and then we had, um, you know, previous employees that we grandfathered into that plan. And then there was a, a rate that we gave the new employees. And so we had different selection sheets based on what your hire date was, because the, the medical benefits were, were getting outrageous. And then we included a health reimbursement plan because our out-of-pocket expenses were becoming so high. We were able to somehow say, okay, you know, our, our out-of-pocket is gonna be. Five thousand dollars, but we're gonna reimburse you fifteen hundred, so it's not a huge expense. But this, this gets it down a little bit for you to, to make it, so it's a little easier for our employees. And, and that's how difficult it got with the benefit committee trying to make it so. Our employees could afford their medical expenses.
I said, I appreciate you looking into it and I appreciate you giving me the education you gave me.
And now we have five selection sheets, so. Five's way better than seventeen.
Have we had any complaints about PEB? For this conversation to come up?
Not that I am aware of.
I, I have one.
Okay.
There's, I think there's, there's been complaints. I don't think it's regarding PEB, I think it's maybe um, administrative parts.
Yeah, there's something.
There's providence. Um, complaints, there's maybe private practices that are dropping them. Um, and not accepting their coverage, but that's not.
That's not on.
That's regions or PEB, that would be other issues.
Mine is they were denying my stents because. They didn't feel that getting stents put on on a Saturday was maybe an emergency. That you maybe you should have waited till Monday to get a doctor's referral to get the stents put in. So uh, that went around and around for about three months, uh, and then they were like, oh, sorry. And, and paid it, so.
So I guess. Piggybacking on where I think where Commissioner Christopher was going, I think PEB's a, a great plan. I don't want to scare the employees to think that we're not gonna stay with PEB in any way. I uh, recognize that it's a very touchy subject, um. But when we're talking about all the levers that you can pull over the long term in order to. Um, save money, we spend a lot of money on our insurance. And currently the county pays a hundred percent of each um, employee's insurance. And then a percentage of the, the spouses and the children and everything else. Is there levers that in the future that could be pulled where the county only pays ninety percent of the employees? So that we can try to keep those eh, costs, those expenses as they rise to a minimum or the budget? Is that something or are these set in place?
Those are, those are not set in place.
Okay.
There are.
Your discretion.
And I say, that's all our discretion for non-union employees and all negotiated for union employees.
PEB gives us their rates and then.
Then we figure it out.
Create the selection sheet.
Yeah, the percentage of employee and the percentage of family are, are both.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make very clear that that's.
And what I can do is I, is I prepare next year to, cause we're gonna be bargaining all five bargaining units. Um, renegotiating is uh, cause I gather the information. Um, to prepare for that, I can gather that information, so we'll have that.
I'd say, and that'd be a new board sitting here, so let's let them address that.
And the new PEB rate should be coming out the end of August, right around the same time the CPI comes out.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
My only other, before you got up and ran away, is I had an add-on. Um, that we decided to just do it under yours about the new life insurance policy. I appreciate that there's a company wishing to do business with like a tech county employees and offer whole life insurance. What I don't appreciate is the number of times my phone is blown up. From the company trying to get me to sign up for their life insurance. I feel at this point, i- in, in, you know, they just picked the wrong time of year because your phone's blowing up with all the election garbage scam email. Stuff you're getting. That it's like. How many times do you have to contact me to get me to try to sign up before it's like, leave me the heck alone? And so I worry, I, I, I guess for me, a better approach is if we have. A company that's new to our plan. That you would come out with an email that tells everybody about the new plan, which I believe I read. And says, please contact Mary Sue at here if you're interested. I don't like the company getting our contact information and blowing up each employee's phone to try to get them. And the last one I got is, is um, I'd have to read the message, it said text. Uh, it wasn't saying text, uh, opt out to no longer receive messages. It implied that we were getting a free service. I mean, the way it read was that it's like you're getting some free life insurance, but if you don't want it, feel free to tell us no. And I think it's, it, the way it was reading was might. Get employees to misinterpret that there's some free thing out there they're missing, just so they'll pick up the phone and call these people back. And so I think there was some miss, I'm not, I'm not pleased, let's just put it that way.
I have a question, if I may interject. Did you, when you got the ads? I kept it and wanted to look at it, but did you reach out at all and say, hey, I might be interested, or did you click on it?
The, the mostly text messages and after the last one, I sent him a note back.
No, I meant in the very beginning, when you first got it, did you reach out?
I know, I've never talked to them, never clicked.
Cause I know sometimes that sets you up.
No, no, I didn't, no, I'm not, I'm.
I've not heard from them.
Fifty-five years old, I can't afford whole life insurance. Um, you know, um.
I'm too old, they don't want me.
Yeah. I've term life insurance, it's all I can afford at this point. So it's just, I guess I would say, I would hope, I, I'm hopeful that the board is in agreement or I have a second vote, that you can. Like notify the company to like calm down and maybe quit, you know, I, if they want to message everybody once, that's fine. But over and over and over and over, I mean, there's at least three or four.
Are you sure it's coming from a company? Neither of us have got anything.
I don't know where they're getting the contact information, but they literally state her name in the text.
So I did provide the information to them and I got an update yesterday and they did notify me.
I, I figured they probably notified you that I emailed them back.
That, yes, that some people requested not to be contacted again and they said that. The people that requested that, they will not contact anymore. You might still receive the mail notifications though, because. Those have already gone out and stuff, but they will not continue to contact you by phone though, because you, it's. That you requested to not be contacted, so they're not gonna keep bugging you, they.
Well, that, that's kinda where I was at, is I mean, eh, technically you shouldn't even have to opt out. I want them to send one message and then be done. Uh, I don't know how many other employees keep hitting him that me.
They don't get in contact with you, they're gonna do it three times, so. If they text you or call you and they don't get in contact with you, they're gonna call again the next week.
And right, but my worry is the same as like Lori said, I don't even want to. Give you any thought that I'm remotely, I'm not answering your phone and I'm not sending you back a message. Because then it's like, I, I feel the same way that she does, now you're on the list. Um, hey, here's a live person, they answered, I'm gonna call them back.
So I think they got the, um, the point for those who don't want to be contacted, but, but I gotta tell you, in our world. We, we catch holy hell if, if somebody misses an enrollment period and said, nobody contacted me and I would have done it and. Now what do I do? And it's too late, I gotta wait a year.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, if we, if we send a county email and they send one text message to everybody, I'm fine with that. It's just the over and overs.
Gotcha.
Um, that were getting repetitive and, and a little spammy for me.
I, I apologize. They, they did say though, that once you said no, they stopped, so. So they have you on the do not contact.
Ask them to send mine to you.
Mine went to him too, so did Jake's. We all put your phone number in.
I guess.
Anything else, Casey? Okay, there's any questions for HR?
Thank you.
Alright, I think.
Thanks, Casey.
Oh, the only other thing I would say for Casey going forward. Sorry, you don't have to, you don't have to come back. Is if, these numbers are really good, it'd be nice to know what our total number is. Um, for, for technically like each line, and I may be off, Mr. Anderson might. What do we pay in total for employee coverage? What do we, what does county pay in total for employee plus spouse or employee plus children, employee plus family? What's that total number? So that.
The county cost is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Per year?
Per month.
Per month. Okay.
So.
That, that answers it right there.
Yeah, I.
Because you can do the math theoretically. If you were going to make any changes and do just a percentage math in your head and then a percentage math. On that and come up with what percentage of savings you might have and or what.
And I have a breakdown.
Macs would be.
Yeah, I have a breakdown of um, how many employee only for each medical plan, cause we have the three different medical plans. Um, employee and children and employee and spouse, um, and so.
No, I'm good, I'm good with that number. I don't know if they need a better number, but I'm, I'm good with, with that number, that.
That's an average monthly cost on just the employer side.
Right. That's a big number. Times twelve.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
Fiscal services.
Thank you, fiscal services with Jen Neal.
Oh, I, I did print out some visuals for you.
Thank you.
So, um, well, budget is in full swing. So we have started the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, this year, because the beginning of my year um, didn't go as I had planned, um. I, I took us as more staged approach to the twenty twenty-five budget, breaking it down into. It's three parts and just, instead of just two. Um, phase one includes the facility requests, the IT requests. Um, I added personnel to the phase one this year. Um, as well as any VR and R, those, those departments that have vehicles um, that collect rental rates. Within the commissioner's budget. Um, it's, it's the time where we um, take inventory of what the odometer reading is and. And each department is responsible for going out to the state bid site to see how much it would cost to replace a like item vehicle. Um, to calculate those rental rates. Um, this year I built uh, web forms for, for those requests, facilities and IT. Um, those, those web forms, as you, I printed a copy for you, um, pretty straightforward. Drop-down boxes, um. Integrated, it can be integrated into the website and it auto-populates into a smart sheet. Um, ideally, we would have an internet um, so that I could house these things on my webpage. For easier access for departments and other elected officials. Um, that's my ultimate goal. And am working towards finding a workaround for that. Um, regardless, everybody has links to those so that they can do that. Um, the template that that auto-populates into is a project management template, so. Should public works or IT like to utilize that dynamic um, project management. Template set, they are able to do so. Um, ultimately, my goal would be to get the capital improvement plan into. Something more visual um, and dynamic uh, visual dashboard. So Brandy was um, actually at the time, I didn't know, he has a very similar goal for the IT side of the CIP. And so we have um, talked a little bit about it and during our downtime after budget. And then I will be brainstorming and working together to build something within smart sheets to be able to um, create that workflow. Um, that is more streamlined between all of our departments and offices. Phase two, which is currently what we're doing right now, um, is the preliminary entries. Those are due to me by the end of day-to-day by every department and office. Um, after I get all of those in, the fiscal team, which consists of Greg, Heather, myself, Rob, um. We have a meeting on the thirty-first of the month to review all the preliminary entries from a high, high level. Um, a lot of the, the hurdles that we have is individual departments, you know, they budget their own revenues and they budget their own expenses. Some of those portions of revenues are actually a part of a much bigger. Cool, sales tax, those types of things, so. This gives us an opportunity to really tie out those revenues to see if they're actually gonna come into line with what we've um. Greg, myself and Heather would forecast those to come in at, since we see that at a much larger level. Um. Phase three. I have um. Phase three is new, I'm gonna hold a budget meeting with all of the directors. And those offices, um, those operating offices, elected officials. And I've given them more time to build their budget memos than what's been ha- in the past. So that will be all a part of um, phase three. We will do that the first week of August. The memos um, are to include key highlights from their department and their budget, what they're proposing. Priorities of their department and office and any new, new requests that they have. Um, grant funding and then the department overview. It's, it's the same as what was requested last year. Um, and then I utilize what they write in that memo to go into the budget book. Um, due to a new ERP system that we're ha- that we have been working on. Um.
Kianta.
The new Kianta potentially uses smart sheets um, in the budget side of things anyway, so. This year I decided that I would have everybody. This year I decided that I would have everybody kind of tip their toe in the water, get comfortable with smart sheets. And so I. I'm having them do all of these these entries in smart sheets. I built much more dynamic um. Sheets for them. I I made the to where I, as simple as I possibly could to where all they had to do is click a. Drop downs, I utilized drop downs, V lookups, um, so that they just had to put in minimal data. And it would auto populate for them. Um. But going through a new ERP transition, learning a new financial system is frustrating, it's cumbersome. Um, very challenging. And so hopefully. The idea was to to get them comfortable, just a a little bit comfortable in smart sheets. So it took some of that burden. And that feelings of frustration with learning the new financial system off, you know, to kind of ease into that. That was my goal anyway. Um, also, when we use Google Sheets and we put everything on our shared drive, the fair board actually doesn't have access to anything. Any of the tools that they need. So smart sheets is cloud based and so they can actually access the tools that they need to put submit their budgets. Um. Because it was all new in smart sheets, um, I utilized another program, which is the. Um, last few pages is an example of the instructions I provided to every department. Um, they were, of course, it's printed here, but when you accessed it online. You know, it was a little bit more dynamic where you needed to click would light up orange. Um, just to help guide people through rather than just written instructions and and I would. And in the past, I would do screenshots, but this was a little bit more streamlined. So um, it seemed to work really well. This is the probably the first year that I didn't have really anybody call me to. With any frustrations. Um, and in the past, nobody's hesitated to call me, so um. I just want to give a the entire budget staff, directors and their office managers and their admin assistants who assist them. A big shout out and a thank you. Um, they've been great and I appreciate that more than they possibly know. Um, any questions with budget?
Um, I don't have any question. Well. I like what you did there. I think that's gonna be good for all of us. Um, you did bring up Kianta. I don't know that this board has had an update from the Kianta Steering Committee or whatever you want to call it, or where we're at in the process. Um, that maybe we can reach out to some of those people, which any of them. Uh, to come give a board where we're at, because last I heard was the end of last year and we were supposed to start. On January one and be done by the end of the year. And here we are halfway through the year and I have no idea where, so.
I'm not a part of the steering committee, but I'm sure my super staff or your staff could reach out to the steering committee to.
Thought you served on the steering committee.
The chair.
I think that was the selection committee. I think that's a different group than.
Yeah, oh, you're, oh, I see. You're talking, oh, finance committee, yes, finance committee is the chair. The Kianta Steering Selection Committee, yes, I did serve on that when Dave left. But then it was picked and done and over and that selection committee is no longer there. So now it's just the people implementing the. The new whatever and I don't I don't know where we're at in that process. We're on our target or.
If if you would like me to, I can, um, or if you want to.
Or I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, you're not a part of the the Kianta implementa- implementation?
No, I'm not.
Project people. Interesting. Okay, that's surprising to me.
Um, so anybody else with any questions on twenty five budget?
I was just gonna say it's not the end of the day yet, so there's still plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Um. My my phone and instant message was off the hook yesterday. Um. So moving on, simultaneously, I have multiple things going on. Uh, the second supplemental for the twenty twenty four year. Um, was hoping to already have that kind of wrapped up um, to submit a. Resolution to set a public hearing. I might have to push that off a week because um. Still working to tie out some of those requests. Um, there's some challenges there with some of the requests. So it's causing me to devote more time to that, really dig a little bit deeper. Um, so I might have to push it off a week. We'll see what I can do today. Um. And then the other thing that I have would be GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. Is collecting some data um, for a Built by Bonds um, campaign. Going to Congress. So they're asking everybody who's had a project built by with bonds. To submit the project overview um, and highlights and some pictures, so. I I came here to request to see if the board would like to participate with that um, with this building at least um, or Pioneer Center or both. Um. And authorize me to submit for for that to help them with their campaign to, in order to maintain those bonds at. The rates that we currently have and. Go forward with Congress.
I'm I'm fine with it. I mean, Pioneer Center. They they may want it. They may see that as really old data.
Yeah.
This building definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have time.
Okay, I will do that. And the last thing I have is that Kroger um, opioid settlement. Um, I was able to get. The participation form to them without use using DocuSign, so I went that route. So it is submitted.
When do you plan on starting? And I can probably scan through my calendar, but this is just as much for me to not have to look at my calendars. It is for the general public. When do we plan on starting having budget Thursday budget workshops and going through the budget cycle? When is that estimated to start?
Uh, without a calendar in front of me.
Estimated.
August eighth, I'm holding a meeting with the department's directors and the office elected officials. So um, the board's kickoff workshop will be the week after that.
Okay, mid-August.
Yeah.
And I think we should have blocked out on your calendars.
It it's.
Thursdays.
Yeah, but it's it's blocked out, but we don't really know when. That's why I was trying to.
Yeah, mid-August. Um, I I would assume, actually, I probably should just have this conversation now. Um. Should we just move beyond Fair Week? Um, it would be Thursday and.
Oh.
Um, I believe market is usually on Thursday, so.
I I it would be my recommendation to not do it on Thursday. We have enough employees and children and everything else doing. For age and everything else down there that I think they need to focus on their children and not on us and a budget number.
Well, there are some departments who who um.
Nothing we're doing can't wait one week. So that would be my recommendation.
Just move beyond fair.
That's what we did last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, I believe so. We might have had. We early more, I think we stopped pretty early.
As I said, I think we were done at eleven or something and then but.
So it gave the afternoon for market and everything like that. And I only I only booked the people who didn't have events going on it. There. No consideration.
Any questions for Jen?
Great job.
Thank you, Jen. McKenzie, solid waste? Go ahead.
Hello, good morning. I don't have a huge update for you guys, but.
I say that's a pretty small little piece of paper. It's recycled.
Yes, well, too small technically.
Good thought.
Um, so you guys signed the resolution this morning for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so we can start to get the ball rolling on that.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. And we'll get Ecology notified when the first meeting is, so um, she can be there. Um, just keep working on my grant and grant updates. Um, the progress report is due this month and so we can get the refund from that. The plastics drop was done the sixteenth. There were seventy two pounds of plastic from Goldendale and a hundred and seventy six pounds of plastic from White Salmon. Taken to be recycled. And then the new vendor for the twine, the first drop off will be in mid-August.
I think the big uh, the why, the well, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is important anytime statutorily required, but. Uh, twenty twenty five, uh, they start their work to update the plan. Um, and so that's uh. Important as well as required. So getting them um, started in in all the background information. Um, it gets it off to a good start. So and that's a fairly big project that McKenzie will be leading. So we appreciate that. And then I have an update. Um, Republic has um, one of their wholly owned subsidiary companies, ACT Enviro. Uh, preparing to start cleaning out the transfer stations. Um, so it's a new vendor and they're uh. In the process, I get updated every day of um, setting up the profiles for each of the transfer stations and and so they're. They're all pretty excited. Joe's pretty excited to have a vendor who'll be there on a regular basis, keeping. Keeping the transfer stations clean and safe and that kind of stuff. So so that's moving forward. Um, as we speak, so that's a good thing. So.
Where are the drop off points for Twine now?
So the vendor we're trying out is actually a gentleman that runs a self-employed company in Ellensburg. Um. So she, my gal is taking it from the. Um, Ace Hardware and White Salmon and here in Goldendale, the feed station is where people can drop it off here in the county. And then she's going to be taking it to Ellensburg. And he recycles it. He has a business where he turns it into concrete fiber.
Nice, thank you.
Any questions for solid waste? No questions.
Good job. Thank you.
Good job. So um, I submitted Randy's IT report this morning. I apologize for that. Uh, he's not here today. And there won't be a report this week from Code Compliance. Uh, when we get that. Um, get that done, uh, we'll get it sent to you. Um, vacations and illnesses have kind of uh. Um, moved some things around, so we'll get you that report as soon as it gets done. Um, and if there's no other questions, I think I'm for everybody. I can jump into the jail.
Hold on. I have one for.
See you back there.
IT.
I had you covered.
Yeah.
You could have ran.
He better not be in here if he's ill. So for IT, um, I've been hearing that we've got issues at the old Public Works Building uh, for internet connectivity. The uh, VoIP continues to drop, so they can't complete a phone call very often and they can't. So we're unable to start providing services for telehealth, because if, how can you do it if it drops all the time?
Yeah, so we're aware of that. IT's been working on it. Um, he's. I think facilities is gonna um, the first thing they're gonna look at is, so it's out of IT's hands, but um, the. Receiver or antenna, whatever it is on this building, the brackets is is kind of flimsy. So when the wind blows, it moves and then it. That drops down. The one on the the building over there is pretty solid. So last I talked to Randy is. They were working to get a new bracket or to get this one secured on this building, uh, because there's no fiber between these buildings anymore. Um, but um. Randy's been working with Director Quinn, but you know, whenever they go over there, it works. And the wind blows, it doesn't work. So they're trying to process elimination to see, you know, they want to eliminate that first. Um, because that seems to be um, the most likely culprit of that, but other um. I mean, there's no other problems with the system they can tell. So I I'm not sure the status of the new bracket or. Getting uh, somebody up there to repair the bracket on this or strengthen the bracket on this building, so.
I guess I don't, I don't see how for a shot that short, how the bracket or or moving could have anything to do with it.
They've been over there troubleshooting and trying to fix it and this is the most likely thing they want to eliminate first. Other than that, we string fiber over there, which would be an expense, but um.
Well, and at this point, it would be above ground, ugly looking stuff.
Yeah, but they're aware of it. There's a work order. Randy's been working on it. Troy's been working on it. Uh. I think Randy's been over there. I know they're frustrated over there and everybody's doing the best they can to try to get it resolved. So.
I just don't want, you know, if we have contracts where we're supposed to be providing services, we can't provide the service. We we need to bet. Put in a backup, a Starlink or something, so that, I mean, you just can't go. If your phone doesn't work, I'll have.
Right. Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is is this something that. IT's qualified to figure out without hiring outside consultancy to figure out?
So far, I mean, he hasn't found anything wrong with the IT system. So it's a connectivity thing and there's a point over there and a point over here. Um, and um. I think he said not to be disrespectful. I can't fix what what's not broke.
Yeah.
So they're trying to figure out what's broke.
I'm.
And it's not an obvious um, problem at this point. So um, so connectivity seems to be. The at least last time we talked, the thing they're trying to figure out.
Well, that's that's the hard part. You can't do anything if you can't duplicate the problem, so.
Right. But there's no question, it is a problem. It isn't working correctly. And they're trying to figure out what's wrong with it and and Director Quinn um, and the staff over there have a right to be frustrated and we're doing the best we can. See if we can resolve it for all the reasons you can speak. So bail me out, George. You're not helping.
I don't have much of an update. As Rob mentioned, I was out of the office. Uh, I was sick for, I think I used up. Like twenty some hours of sick time on this uh, last uh, since last update. So I have a lot of catching up to do and a lot of very angry uh, complaints.
Well, he's got quite, but at one point, close to fifty.
Yeah, I'm at I'm at fifty, which is really unusual. It's been uh, since the two years I've been here. This is definitely the. Most uh, amount of complaints we've ever had. My department.
What are what are most of the new complaints? Uh, is it trash? Is it yards? Is it barking dogs? Is it, I mean, did it have any kind of a?
Yeah, it it varies from everything, so um.
All the above.
Yeah, all the above. Um. I think uh, I think at the beginning, I was really focused on uh, really letting the uh, Clicktag County know that there's a compliance officer. And now people know. And uh, and and it's great, uh, but what I've noticed, the only pattern that I've really noticed is that. When I, when I get a complaint from one side of the community, usually it's in that area for a couple of weeks. Uh, people start submitting complaints from the neighboring parcels and. Um, so they'll they'll see me out there, they'll interact with me and then they'll say, oh, I I have this going on or my neighbor has this going on.
And I know people get frustrated. There's one case I'm not gonna probably talk about, but you know, uh, the landlord had to evict the tenant. Before they could clean up the property and that's a long legal process. People have a lot of rights. Evictions, rentals, those are, it's a pretty high profile these days. And so sometimes the neighbors don't understand or appreciate how long it can take. For those processes to get to a point where the landlord can do something. So we try and communicate with those folks. Deceptics systems, when the water level was high and there was a lot of water, things were visible. We can't move forward unless we don't see it, smell it. Kind of thing. And when it's now it's dry, those other, the evidence isn't there anymore. So that frustrates people as well. So you know, it's just um. The time of year can can have an impact on whatever the complaints are at the time. But fifty's a lot. That's a lot of, it's a big workload.
Yeah.
So how, so you're up to fifty total? How many were resolved?
Uh, since the last update, there was uh, six that were closed and then two. Technically, I don't, I didn't close them, but uh, there were referrals from Department of Ecology, which um, I did find solutions for. Which I think I included one of them in my update.
I didn't send them that yet.
Oh.
But we will.
So, yeah, sorry. So there was a, yeah, the, like, I don't count uh, ecology complaints as. Closures from my department's workload, but they are also something I kind of, you know, do behind the. Uh. Kind of off the books, you could say.
So that means Ecology takes them over and follows them.
Usually, uh, so the usually um, complaints are uh, received by Ecology through their uh. Environmental reporting tracking system. So I'll receive the earths as a referral from Ecology. And then they'll essentially ask me, hey, can you go out there and take a look, write a report, tell us what you see? Or or what you don't see. And uh. And so a lot of the times I'm doing a lot of the footwork and um, and then I'll just relay to Ecology and then. They'll either ask me to continue or disregard.
And as you can imagine, some of these properties involve law enforcement and other sheriff's departments. Been good to work with George to. Uh, keep him out of certain six situations or be aware of when he's in a certain situation. Uh, he's a very complicated um. Wide variety of type complaints that in some cases involve many different agencies, so.
Which I don't really talk about a lot of the times, but the sheriff's office is really great at if they see me out and about. Kind of sticking my nose in places where I probably shouldn't be and uh, uh, they'll just come up. Say, hey, maybe. Don't, yeah, work on something else for a bit. Like, Roger that.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's important.
Yeah.
Any questions for George? I didn't even look for his report. I told him not to worry about it until he felt better, but apparently he did it anyway. So I appreciate that. We'll get that to you.
Thank you, George.
Alright, thanks, sis.
It's always George is doing a good job. And hadn't have his rig towed what, a month or two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, yeah, my certain times though, snapped on when I was in Cleveland. So that was interesting because apparently your car can run off just the battery for for quite a long time, I actually found out, but then after that.
Yeah, without power steering and air conditioning.
What is happening?
Power steering, no dash, just no radio.
I wasn't gonna give them all that detail, George.
Yeah, but I use some fire, which, you know, they've, they've become my friends. A lot of interactions, they were great. They, they came out, provided me a jump. I took off, my battery would give me, I don't know, five, five or so miles and then they would pull over and jump me again.
George says he's never gonna have a rig towed ever again. So.
Yeah. Paco's talk, Paco's talks. Paco's tire and repair was extremely, I cannot say more great things about them. They ordered a part from the Serpentine belt from Hood River. They had it rushed over and they just charged me a regular rate just for like
Where are they located at?
Uh, White Salmon. I think it's like a hundred and fifty dollars for the repair and they had me on the road in two hours.
Wow. No, I'm, I'm
Yeah.
I was doing math in my head, eight tenths of an hour for a serpentine belt.
Thanks, George.
Ten hundred bucks now, that's eighty bucks plus the part.
He's very creative on that. And to give from point A to point B.
We're, we're gonna need to get him a van, just so everything in the back is the spare parts.
He is personally
Because it doesn't matter what vehicle we give him, he breaks. He's back.
So when I get a car and then it breaks down like a week later, that's not my fault.
He's working his way through the fleet.
Who's in possession of the car when it breaks?
Anyway, thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
If there's no other questions on those departments, I'll jump into the jail update if that's appropriate. Okay. Uh, first of all, there'll be no update uh, next Tuesday. Just want everybody to know, don't anticipate. If there is, I'll notify the correction staff, but at this point, I don't foresee an update next Tuesday. Uh, the operations review, Mr. Brions will be here on August sixth, seventh and eighth, at least the last time we talked. Um, it was either that or the fair week and I advised him that wasn't a good week to be here. Uh, everybody's really busy. He's gonna bring a sergeant with him who's a highly qualified in the Spelman um, module for corrections. Uh, ours is significantly out of date. And they're gonna, no cost does update that. And so dispatch and IT are working with, with Chief Brons and his sergeant to get that work done. So that's very appreciated. It'll provide the correction staff a lot better information. So they'll be doing that while they're here. He'll continue the review. Uh, last time we talked, our plan is he'll be joining me on the update on, I think it's the sixth is Tuesday. To talk to the board and introduce himself to the board and answer any questions. The review will not be done at that point. But but I thought you might want to meet him and talk to him and ask him questions. So at least our plan is um, is to have him attend that update with me. Um, so the work continues. I've notified the sheriff's office. Transfer, the final resolution, the last piece really is the finance piece. And so we had a discussion uh, with the finance committee on Friday about that and they're going to review that part of the resolution for me. So that's really the last piece. And then the resolution will be, will be ready to go whenever the commissioners decide to to proceed with the, the, the actual formal transfer. The jail administrative position, and I, I heard the discussion earlier. And if you want to talk more about that, I'd like to loop back at the end of the update and talk about that, challenges and opportunities. But just to let you know, you approved the Prothman contract today. Thank you. Um, if we can get resolved, the challenges and opportunities, it'll be posted Friday with first review date is September first. Monday, I will post it with the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. And I will, it'll be distributed to all thirty nine corrections departments as well. Thirty five, because Norcore has four counties in Oregon. So it'll go to, to every corrections um, team in the state of Oregon and Washington, the posting will. Um, but anyway, so we're ready to move forward there. The only piece left is that paragraph that you guys were discussing. We've expanded bargaining with the union. We're still in bargaining over the potential of Norcore. Uh, we're also now going to be bargaining the impact of transferring it from the sheriff to the commissioners. That's the first step. So that in itself has an impact bargaining. Um, and then there's some other things. So the bargaining is expanding as we, as we proceed through here. Uh, the originating agency identifier, remember I talked about last time, we have to have one to identify jail. Either we temporarily use the current one the sheriff has or we get our own. Um, so both options are hopefully still on the table. It's my understanding that the information I provided to the state police has been forwarded to the FBI and they're gonna do an initial review to see if we can get that number established and just set aside until we need it. So, so that's been worked on. Lexapro, where the jail posts all of their policies. Uh, we're in the process. I've talked to the rep this morning. They're gonna set up a new account, have it inactive until the transfer date and then they'll activate it and just move over all of the policies and information. So that is, is being done. Uh, I think I mentioned this last time, I had the information from G P D on who does the background checks, polygraph and psychology assessments. And so I'm gonna reach out to them. So, so we're good to go for any background checks for new employees once the transfer happens. Call signs, we talked about that. Alberto will help us. Uh, the new Department of Corrections, get the call signs changed for the radio system. Credit cards, the auditors has the application. I submitted that following the last meeting. For fuel cards, I'm working with WEX and the Pacific Pride to get new accounts set up for fuel cards for the two DOC vehicles. Um, working with the auditor's office on the transferring of billing for medical pharmacy. I'll be setting up a new Home Depot and Airmark accounts for the Department of Corrections. V R N R, we have that. Jim's provided that information. Um, I, I T is, I submitted a help desk, I T for cell phone accounts, new copier uh, network. You have to divide the network between the sheriff and the Department of Corrections. Policy group, new group in virtue, new G drives and reshuffle email groups and move them to their respective department offices and those will be done on a timeline, all, all with the direction to be ready to go when the commissioners want to do the transfer. So that work is each one of them has its own timeline. And so I, I've told IT however they, however they get that done, it just needs to be all done at a point in the future. So they're working on that. And Eagle fax licenses included in that. And then IT billing for the DOC stuff is being done. A new one that was added is body cams. So the sheriff's office has the software for the body cams when we move the jail to DOC. We'll have to either have a separate account. I think in the easiest thing everybody is suggesting is that we just split the bill. But I, I'm not in control of that. So that's, hopeful that'll be the case. We just take the invoice. IT is already the administrator for that software.
Would we as the Department of Corrections be able to go after and facilitate grants for body cams if we're splitting the bill? If the contract's still under the sheriff's department, it would be him that gets grants, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure there's other grants for the body cams other than the initial one, but I don't know. I'll find out.
Because that would be my concern about splitting the bill.
I'm hopeful we can
There, there is grant money out there.
The IT's already the administrator, so they do all the, the, the behind the curtain work. Uh, and if we can just split the bill, I mean, the county is the county. But if we have to separate that, we'll, we'll deal with that as we get to it. But I'm hoping Plan A is the plan. Um, and then some other things we're working on. I've added control access, facilities will have to change all the key cards. So we're trying, we're getting way down in the weeds, which we need to do on a transition plan.
Right. And just to clarify, I'm not necessarily advocating for not splitting the bill. But if, if the contract was under the Department of Corrections, at least then we can apply for grants on it. And then he could pay half of whatever we're paying. So I'm just saying, who holds the contract is, is the worry.
Well, I think ultimately the county owns the contract. It's just under the sheriff's office. So well, I'm gonna try and work out all those details, but that's another good option that I can add to the list. Uh, the deputizing the corrections officers, my understanding, when that, when it moves out from under the sheriff, then the sheriff no longer do that. It would, it's another process. Don't know that for sure. And then Jose Brions has said that he will review this task list when he's here. Uh, he's been through this process before and he will review this. His team will take a look at our task list to make sure we're covering all the pieces of the transition. It's good to have another set of eyes from the outside look at that, uh, to make sure that we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. Because literally we're down in the weeds, patches, stationary, that kind of stuff, and we just don't want to miss anything. Uh, or be surprised by anything. So sorry for all the detail, but I think it's important you hear it and the folks here what what steps were taken to move forward. So my reason for, I do want to mention for the posting is we got the new twenty twenty four information. Uh, salary information statewide. We just got it, I think Casey mentioned a week ago. So looking at the jail administrators, when we looked at the twenty twenty three information, our grade seventy six was, was competitive and it still is. Uh, if you look at all the counties in the state of Washington, uh, the averages are like our step eight on that pay scale. But if you look at the eleven counties we compare ourselves to, we're at the midpoint, we're right in the middle. And actually, we pay higher than the midpoint. So we're still competitive and within the group we compare to, we're very competitive salary wise. So it's still good information. It's, if you're gonna, you know, it's a good place to be salary wise. So the reason I sent you, I sent all three of you that opportunities and challenges. I did that when we posted the planning director. I think that's important. That's where the commissioners get to tell prospective applicants, these are the things we want you to focus on. Here's, here's what the here, here are the issues and, and opportunities and, and um, so I sent you, I sent you those. The one I knew there probably be some discussion about was the, the bullet point about Norcore. Uh, I think I mentioned in the email, I felt, I felt pretty strongly that if we're gonna recruit somebody, they need to know um, what's ahead of them. And the motion was to continue options two and three, which uh, one of those is Norcore. So I've expanded a little bit. I did get a little feedback from one of the commissioners on, on that section. Just to say that a lot of work's been done, uh, looking at that option and the new jail administrator will be tasked continuing that work and continuing to, to look into that option. Uh, at that point, they would probably take the lead on that. And unless that changes, but right now, there's two options on the table and I didn't think it was ethical to recruit somebody and not let them know that that potential exists. And so that's why I included it in there for, for your review and feedback. So.
I thought it all looked very good, yeah, for some, a potential applicant.
I've got a few minor edits that I'll send to you. Okay. And I've changed it since then, so I'll
Okay.
I'll take a look at that and
Send it back to me then. Take a look at it again.
Commissioner Christopher? Okay.
Nothing.
Okay.
Great.
So then once we get, um, so once I look at Jake's and edits and, oh, are we good to go? Cause Protham, this is the last piece. Everything else they've already got and, and um, we're good to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think the goal is to have it posted Friday.
Oh, good.
And then September first.
Yeah.
Um, we decided to leave it out there a little bit longer, roughly a full month. Um, to, to make sure we give everybody an opportunity to apply who's interested.
Yeah, and thank you for paying attention to detail.
Wow.
There's millions of them.
Every time I ask a question, I get two more questions. So that's
Some of the things you're covering in there, it's like, I don't know that we ever thought about it. I don't know that any citizen that mentioned it ever thought about it. It's just one of those just that. You're going after a question that was asked and next thing you know, you got three more that you need answered. And it's, it's a much bigger process.
I mean, just the patches alone, I was thinking initially it was like, well, it's no big deal, but it is a big deal because all their patches say sheriff's office. This patch is taken off, so we're gonna have to
Vinyl wraps for vehicles and everything else. So.
Yeah. Though I don't know if they're, if the two rigs, I know one of them doesn't have any markings on it. I don't know if the van does. I haven't seen it. So. But anyway, yes, those kind of things will have to be done fairly soon. And a lot of it will be done after it gets started, but I don't want a jail administrator to start from scratch on five hundred details. So. Any other questions about that? No, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the detailed analysis.
Great. So, on to economic development. Richard Foster and crew.
So usually economic development takes up all the air out of the room compared to natural resources, but this time we're gonna flip flop. So we very quickly, the economic development, and then we have a presentation on Dry Creek and Butler Creek for the, for all three commissioners.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Um, update for the Clicktack Mill site. We have chosen the firm Mall Foster and Alangi to complete the scope of work for the integrated planning grant. And we are gonna have the first kickoff meeting with ecology, that firm and our staff on Friday to get a timeline and get going on it. So exciting. Affordable housing, we have received applications from the new director of WA GAAP and a community member at large. And we've reached out to the new director of Mid Columbia Housing Authority for an application. Our public health director has agreed to be on the board as was done in the past. And then of course, we'll have Richard on the board to make up five. And we have been working with all three city mayors and the K C PETA executive committee to draft an application uh, for the House Bill fourteen oh six affordable housing dollars. And we'll present that this evening at the full K C PETA board meeting. Um, and we're gonna start calling it the ASH dollars, A A S H, which stands for affordable and supportive housing, which comes directly from R C W eighty two point one four point five four zero. Um, the A D O Grant Rider Grant, it was successful this first grant round, which just ended June thirtieth. Um, we have interest from both M C Ed and the Mount Adams Institute to pursue grand, uh, round two funding. And we need to look into that as the parameters will have changed for round two. Um, but between the two of them, um, their requested amount would be around forty five thousand dollars. Um, city engagement, the city of Goldendale has requested some assistance in funding for the incubator space. Um, more details to come on that as the conversations just began. Any questions for economic?
Funding for the current incubator space or for another incubator space?
For, for the current incubator space. They're looking at doing some upgrades, especially within the A C ventilation. So that when, when it comes to the, the type of businesses that are going in there, it's, it's basically safer and they can bring in additional businesses.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea.
I did have one suggestion for the uh, housing application packet. I know you put in there wordage about sponsored by, you know, because we talked about sponsored by the city or the county, whoever's doing it. I guess I, I, and the easy answer is I didn't like the wordage you used. Okay. So I was gonna suggest an edit.
Yeah.
Um, that the board can look at, because like I said, I would like to know that those applications either got a thumbs up or a thumb down from the entity of which they're going to be operating within. Um, so I kind of wanted to set that up as, as that that they, that their sponsor, they had to have a sponsor. And that the sponsor was okay with their project before K C PETA approved the project. Um, kind of a scenario that if the, the, the city doesn't support the project, then it's dead on arrival to K C PETA. Is kind of my rationale of way of setting that up, uh, to make sure the cities get uh, priority over where they spend the dollars that were theirs to begin with.
Okay.
So that's kind of my idea on the wording and yours kind of leaves it, well, does the city support it? But it doesn't need to support it. It just doesn't support it. Um, so, yeah, I don't know. That was my thinking anyway.
Yeah, I can make that change and have, and have that presented. Um, as Keaton does his. All right, go ahead and share. Start sending it out. So as Keaton sets up the presentation for the natural resources. Portion, I'll just dive into my, my piece. We'll end with the presentation. Um, so Swizzler, we have yet another time extension. This one's nine months, should be going until the end of the first quarter next year. Which should be the last time extension that we need. So we have, there, there should be plenty of time to just solidify this entire process. For the Swizzler reservoir project. Um. KCPDA meeting tonight, six P M, uh, downstairs. Um, I know we're in the middle of budget cycle. We're pretty much the same as what we typically do. So just FYI. Um, and then two things for the board. Uh, the water conservancy board. So I was at the water conservancy board a couple of weeks ago, uh, as you may remember. I was supposed to attend as a liaison and, and now it's been an official request by the board. We have. Uh, a resignation by one of the Andrews, I think it was Scott Andrews, had, had just put in his resignation letter. Um, they're requesting that I fulfill Dave McClure's old spot as an alternate board member. Uh, so that they can maintain quorum when they go to these meetings. Um, and there will likely be some additional. Board vacancies here in the coming months or short term, as we have a couple of other board members that are looking to resign. These appointments are six years in length. So I just wanted to see how the board felt about that before I. Gave the official yes or no to Ecology with Ben Cor.
I have, I think we should reach out and try to fill those applicants. I have reservations. Because of um, the conflict kind of in, interest that was. Perceived with the, the way we used to do it, um, having you step into that role.
Okay.
Um, that would be my preferences, that I'd like to get those applications out. If we're gonna have board members. Let's get qualified, interested citizens to dedicate themselves to that board.
I, I will agree with Commissioner Zola on this. I think there needs to be a separation. Uh, in a clear separation, uh, to make sure that there isn't any potential conflict of interest. Um, I don't have an issue with you helping, but to sit on and make votes and decisions, um. Uh, I would prefer not.
Okay.
So for clarification, you were asking to sit on as a volunteer, non-paid county position. You'd be doing it as an individual. Like any other, like any other county resident?
Yeah, basically, that's, that's what it would be, and it would be as an alternate.
Yeah, as an, or one of the alternate spots.
Yeah.
And are you providing any administrative support to the water conservancy board currently?
No.
From the county's position?
Yeah, I'm not providing anything. They have their own computer and their own funding and all of it.
Okay, so what you were doing is you were asking if you could apply for one of the positions as the alternate.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you are a resident and we have the um, appointment process that we go through. And if you wanted to apply, I would look at your application equally as I would all other applications, being that. Um, if you take an interest in water rights and want to go through the forty hours of training and everything else. It's a very interesting position. Uh, you learn a lot. Um, but again, it's not tied to the county. It's its own organization.
Okay.
Sounds like you got an application to hand out here on January first.
But then it would be consideration that, on the other hand, you do act as staff to assist them. And we assist them with the building and we assist them with other, and there's a, you know, they have this edge of entirely separate board from the county. But yet we start dipping into that assisting. So I'd be cautious of that level.
They, they, we are all absolutely correct. You can apply. And you can see whether the board chooses to accept your application or not. It's up to you.
Okay, thank you. And then more, more concerning, at least, well, not, not more concerning, but. What was gonna spur some additional conversation tonight? The Columbia Gorge Regional Airport, we have the hangar space down there, the engineering design portion. Um, originally back in February, March timeframe, the county commissioner said, hey, go forth. Let's start using our match uh, for the engineering design portion. Um, and we have that budget shortfall that was identified right when we got the award letter back in twenty twenty two. Since that time, we were able to be awarded a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. For uh, the engineering design portion from Washington State Department of Commerce with the Small Business Innovation Fund. Uh, which basically took out almost half of that design fee. So we went from about five hundred and thirty five thousand down to two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars that's needed. To finish out that design phase. The airports can be moving forward with a request tonight to the KCPDA board. For basically three hundred thousand dollars. The city of the DOWs, they're gonna be discussing it tonight. Uh, but they have shown initial interest in, and uh, supporting their half of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the net ask. From the point oh nine funds would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get done with the engineering design phase. Of the entire Phase Two Aviation Business Park. And that would include the fourteen thousand square foot hangar space. For the Columbia Gorge Community College's Aviation Maintenance Training Hangar, as well as the civil work to open up those ten lots. So basically, it's a hundred and fifty K to finish out this engineering design phase without touching. The U S E D A match. Right now, we have that unencumbered. Uh, but some of the concerns we have moving forward, hence the request, and we'll be briefed again tonight, is. Once we start dipping into those funds, the U S E D A can come back and tell us that we have to finish the project. If we make the project smaller in scope, then they can take funding away in proportion to how much smaller in scope that we're gonna go with it. So if we don't touch the match, basically, it'll put. It, it'll put us in a better position as we go back to the Investment Review Committee to ask for the remaining budget shortfall. We've already obtained about two million dollars in match from various uh, state funding, which is considered as match. The original match that they gave us was basically four to one, uh, two point eight million dollars in grant, seven hundred thousand dollars in match, three hundred and fifty from the county. Um, and so with that, we were, we were able to obtain uh, basically an additional one million dollar car loan. Which would be serviced by the Columbia Gorge Community College with the contract with the airport. Um, and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollar um. Grant for the engineering design phase. I think it's gonna be a lot safer. You know, to, to go that route. Uh, one of the main reasons is we've gone through three different. Since the award letter, uh, the county was, and, and I remember when the U S E D A came out and they, and they spoke to everybody. Um, we, we've gone through three different uh, state reps or Eastern Washington reps. On this project and four different, uh, just off the top of my head, four different project engineers. So we went from. Laura Ives to Michael Jones, now it's Wes Clark. Our project engineers went from, uh, I think it was Brian Jacobson to Mary Rudokas. To uh, Brian Alvis, and now we're on to uh, Toby, uh, Toby Keith. So Toby.
He's busy at concert tours, so I don't know.
Yeah, and same, same name, same name. Uh, but To- Toby seems very amicable to the idea of going back to the Investment Review Committee. Once we're done with the, once we're done with the engineering phase, but he's newer and with so many changed players with the U S E D A, which was a. I would like to say that was, that was an unforeseen circumstance originally, uh, hence this additional ask. So, but once this is done, this would be, it is our intent that this would be the last ask for this project. We had that one initial ask. We haven't had another ask. For this project.
Well, I think there'll be another ask, but.
Not for this.
Back on this, uh, well, I don't know. Um. I will not be at the meeting tonight. I do have a conflicting meeting. Uh, but I am in favor of us coming up with a hundred and fifty grand for our half of the three hundred grand needed to move forward. On that project, so I don't know if I'm. Gonna be a, a, a needed vote or not, but I, I am in support just for.
So just to be clear, we're, we're at seven hundred thousand dollar match now. With the three hundred thousand dollar match, it will still put us within the allowable match from the federal government. When we put in our extra portion to complete it. From the current numbers.
Well, and I think it will help solidify potentially new money. Because they're seeing we're willing to put more money into the project. So I think it's a good thing that way, too.
And, and I know we have a lot of public that tends to, and, and we're in the middle of budget cycle, right? And, and people are worried about the budget. Just to clarify, these funds would be a request from the point oh nine, which is a portion of the sales and use tax with the. Which the Washington State Department of Revenue gives back to Clickitat County. These are restricted use funds for economic development purposes and or staff, so.
Can't be used for anything else.
Okay.
This is, this is roughly three million dollars sitting in our reserves of our twelve million that are restricted funds that we can't spend on other things. So there's money there for it.
Yes.
And that's hence the reason I don't have a problem. And we're making like four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year on this thing, and we're not spending four hundred and fifty.
One, one thing that will be briefed tonight is the, as vetted by the U S E D A, the, the build out on the aviation business park. Within, I think it's five years or ten years off the top of my head, but they vetted out a couple of the businesses that signed on as beneficiaries that they would. That they would build a hangar space and they would put in a business immediately. And they've, the U S E D A came out with a hundred and twenty one jobs. Created fifty nine jobs retained. So with just the, the, if, if. The KCPA board allows it tonight as the advisory board, that a hundred and fifty K would put the total county. Um.
Spends.
Match at five hundred thousand dollars. So, and then we're getting five point five million dollars in. Infrastructure investment as well as hangar space would be revenue generating for the county. And so five hundred thousand divided by a hundred and twenty one new jobs, not talking about the training that they have down at the college or anything. That comes out to about four thousand dollars of investment per new job. Um, in regards to the Columbia Gorge Community College's Aviation Maintenance. Portion of that, twenty four students are currently uh, in that program. It needs to be at the airport. They're looking to expand it to forty eight students. And according to CGCC's um. Administ- uh, admissions, twenty five percent of our student body come directly from Clickitat County.
See, there's a good number. I've been looking for that number.
That's the best part of your speech, right?
Looking for that number for four years.
I've, I've had to call up a number of people up at CGCC and.
Just use that last paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, just highlight that paragraph. Well, you think about it, but, but see, that brings up home another thing. If only twenty five percent of them were from here. Then maybe we should only be paying twenty five percent of it.
But they're gonna be closer now.
Can of worms.
It's gonna be on our side of the river and very accessible.
Yep. Um, now we're gonna move over into natural resources and, and end with uh, Butler Creek and Dry Creek, go ahead.
Howdy commissioners, um, just running through a couple of things real quick, very fast, that way we can, where we're not here all, all day for the presentation. Um, the park plan is going on very well, and we're moving on to Phase Two, which is the public outreach. Um, the city is going to conduct that in a manner that uh, they deem fit, you know, with the R C O requirements. Probably gonna be some sort of public meeting in which we'll uh, get the public's opinion on um. What parks do they use? How much do they use them? You know, what could be done to improve the experience? And then that will be put back into the plan, which will move on to Phase Three, which is a, a synthesization of the public and sort of what's um. The park committee has deemed should be in the plan.
Are they going to release the current draft of the plan before comment?
Uh.
I would, I mean, otherwise, how do they get comment?
So it's basically uh, the park committee and the, the county assisting are gonna put something together for that public meeting so that the public knows. What exactly we're doing, right? What's the, uh, what is the plan? What's the planning process? What's in the plan? What's required of them? The opportunities that could be, you know, garnered by having the plan, right? So we'll have a, like a comprehensive presentation put together. For the public for that meeting so that they can sort of, you know, give intelligent feedback.
Um, please keep me informed of when that meeting is.
Absolutely. And then uh.
And.
That's going.
I apologize in advance for plugging the room for you.
It's, um, it's all right. Um, the, the only hang up so far is that's going very well. Um. There's questions about whether, um, so the city, the planning area is when this, was within the city. And the, the parks and the recreational spaces are all owned by the city. There is, however, that little corridor and the pool, which are both owned by the. Central Clickitat um, Parks and Rec District. And it's a matter of whether they're in the plan or they're not in the plan. Because if they're in the plan, any grant that they would pursue, which are those for planning grants. There are plenty of R C O grants that don't require a plan. They just have a higher match, right? There's gonna be less funding available. If they're going to be a part of the plan, those, those areas in Central Clickitat. Um, any funding pursued would have to be on behalf of the city. And uh, we are unsure whether that will compromise the ownership of those. You know, we don't wanna step on a landmine and all of a sudden that ownership of, of, of that land is compromised. So the department is going to be attending the Central Clickitat Parks and Rec um, board meeting, which is uh, tomorrow at the pool. I think at like six o'clock, um, just to sort of actually engage with stakeholders and just let them know that it's a bit more complicated than. Than being represented on the plan. And we're gonna be doing research in the meantime to see just exactly how that would work.
Are we talking about actually putting the pool property on, or are we just talking the, the green belt along the creek?
So the green belt and, and the pool, right, and, and.
Those are the two properties.
Those are the two properties owned by Central Clickitat Parks and Rec and. We think it would be a good, especially that green belt, it would be, you know, a good opportunity, right, to allow it to get funding, but. Um, again, it's unsure.
It's darn near the only way it's ever.
Yeah, i- i- it's unsure as to whether it would be the best for it to be on that plan, or maybe they could create their own plan. Like I said, we don't wanna just set off some chain reaction that might affect, uh, because if, if you apply for the R C O grant, you know, regardless of who. You know, it's gonna be, have to be sponsored. The city's gonna have to meet their planning requirements. The city's gonna have to demonstrate, um. I believe R C O calls it like a standard of uh, control or something like that, right? Some in terms of ownership. So, you know, it could be an easement or a lease or something like that. And obviously, we don't want.
I see that's interesting, because I always assumed if there was gonna be some kind of trail put in along the creek or bridge over, or. There's been all these talks with the Conservation District and the Pool District and, but I always figured they'd be applying for their own R C O grant, not through the city to do that.
Exactly. And, and that'll be a conversation that'll have to be had there, which, you know, it might. It, it might lead to some unforeseen consequences or circumstances down the line that might not be the best thing for beyond the.
I think you're right. It's probably a good idea to not be on the plan.
Exactly. Um, in the department, you know, if they wanna create a plan down the line, the department would of course offer their assistance if that was necessary. Um, additionally, um, uh, the department is in the process of creating a catalog of all federal and state ESA listed. Um, and candidate species, just uh, sort of have, uh, you know, I don't know if you call it ammunition or something, just in the back so that we're. Aware of, you know, potential, you know, candidate species or species that might be uplisted, like the Western gray squirrel, which was uplisted recently. That we were sort of aware of how those are going, right, and, and what effects they might have. Um, you know, for example, the. Pickleton Fire right now, it's going on, right? That's right in the middle of uh, you know, jackrabbit and burrowing owl and all of these species which are. You know, candidates or threatened, or it could be in the process of being uplisted, right? You know. Unfortunate damage, right, and damage to crops and, and whatnot, but uh, you know, other unforeseen consequences, right, that we also need to be aware of. That a well monitoring is going well. Um, we're in the process of doing our analysis. Um. Been learning a lot about hydrology and geomorphology and all of that. That makes it a lot more helpful and easier to understand exactly what I'm looking at. Um, uh, with the well depths, but we're working on that analysis. Additionally, the um, fall monitoring period is coming up very quick. Um, we'll be uh, doing our outreach to the well owners soon, probably in September and October is around when that should be conducted. Right, well, that's all I got. Um, this is gonna be a blast to the past for you, Commissioner Anderson. I'm, I'm sorry if we're sort of treading on old ground. If I, if I make a mistake. Uh, please correct me. You know more about this than, than, than we probably do. So this is the, the Dry Creek Butler Creek project that we've been doing since, I believe, twenty eighteen was when the contract got signed. Which, you know, just the, the, the real skinny right before I begin the presentation is it's essentially the refined base and yield assessment. Which is further data collection in, in an assessment on how much a reservoir could yield on Dry Creek or Butler Creek. Which are two headwater tributaries to the little Clickitat, right up near Sados Pass or right next to uh, the state park up there, Brooks Memorial. Right, so um, I wanted to make this a sort of uh, longer history of exactly, you know, the Ws of, you know. Why we're doing this, you know, what happened in the past, questions of, you know, where our responsibility lies with these projects. Both in the past, current, and if these projects were to be developed in the future, right? So unfortunately, we have to start all the way back in nineteen seventy one with the Water Resources Act. And basically, this was uh, you know, one of the first pieces of state legislation that prioritized water resources. And basically, this was uh, you know, one of the first pieces of state legislation that prioritized water resources for development, conservation and agriculture, TMDL base flows, right, all the stuff we deal with with water, right, they all sort of come back to this Water Resources Act nineteen seventy-one, which would eventually lead to different pieces of legislation, such as the Water Resources Management Program of nineteen seventy-six, which created the Rias or Wyros, however you wanna call them, established sixty-two water resource inventory areas that would be used to segment and localize water management, uh, water control, water projects, right? Sort of like a, I don't know, like a spirit of democracy thing, I guess, right, where, you know, the, the counties or areas are gonna have better control and management over their own water resource areas, rather than the state sort of saying, you know, we're gonna build something here or there. And there are three uh, Wyros that are sort of in our, in our area in, in the county, uh, Ria twenty-nine, Ria thirty and Ria thirty-one. Right, and then in nineteen ninety-seven, this is sort of what actually created the funding opportunities for the water resource projects. Um, it did several things, it divided Ria twenty-nine into the uh, A and B, so one is the Wind River, which is Skamania County and further west, and then White Salmon River, which is, which is us, right, which is under our, under our um, um, lead agency. And then along with creating these funding opportunities for basically water resource planning, what was required is that because obviously these don't map up to the map of Washington Counties, right? So what happened is that stakeholders, local governments, the largest city, et cetera, were required to declare a lead agency that would basically manage and administrate uh, planning efforts, right, within these water resource inventory areas, right? And then this is just declaring a lead agency, so um, for Rias twenty-nine B, thirty and thirty-one, the counties, the cities, the PUD, you know, they all met together and they all declared Clickitat County the lead agency, which is, well, why are we responsible for doing this here, even if it's not in our county area, because twenty years ago, we were declared a lead agency for all water resource fish projects, that kind of stuff that are within these areas that, you know, that, that could be um, administered or pursued, right, by, by a county.
Which is how we got Swissler.
Exactly, which is that, and, and that's exactly what I wanted, why I wanted to make a larger history of this, right, rather than making the Swizzler presentation as well, right, sort of why we did things in the past, why we're doing things right now, and if we were to do these things in the future, how we would go about, how we would go about doing these. Right, so these are our three Wyros. I'm sorry, these maps are terrible, it's impossible to find, you know, good maps of the, of the, the Rias. Basically, the White Salmon River, uh, parts of Clickitat, Skamania, Yakima Counties, they all met together and they declared Clickitat County the, the lead agency. It's got condit damned, uh, most of the Gifford Pincho National Forest up near Mount Adams, White Salmon Benjen. Ria thirty, this is where, uh, this is gonna be our focus for the rest of this presentation, this is where, um, obviously, the Clickitat River, Little Clickitat, it's where the Dry Butler Creek Project is, is, is being conducted. Parts of Clickitat and Yakima Counties, once again, they all met, they declared Clickitat County the lead agency for any projects or, or development that would occur here. Um, notable features, the Clickitat River is the second longest, second longest undammed river in the state of Washington, which is pretty interesting. Um, it's got a significant uh, part of Yakima Nation Territory, which is most of the Clickitat Headwater up here. Also got Goldendale, Lisle, Downsport, right, most of the center of the county. And then Ria thirty-one, um, this is interesting because the majority of it is not in Clickitat County, the majority of it is actually in Benton County. Um, parts of Clickitat, Yakima and Benton Counties, and it's also got the city of Kennewick. They all met together again, and they all declared Clickitat County the lead agency, right, so it's got Horse Heaven Hills, Big Ag Area, um, not a whole lot of fish, not a whole lot of water, right, most of it's in, in Rock Creek, where um, you'll find most of your, basically, your steelhead and salmon. So, wanted to go back to Ria thirty, this is gonna be, like I said, the focus for this presentation as to sort of where this project is and why we're doing it. Right, so the, I guess the problem with Ria thirty is that unlike uh, Ria twenty-nine B, we're sort of, I wouldn't say the White Salmon watershed is necessarily constant, but it's a lot more constant than Ria thirty, which you, the, you know, the upper Clickitat and the Clickitat River is, is vastly different from the sort of eastern edges of this water resource um, inventory area where it's drier, there's less water, right, and the uh, Clickitat gets most of its uh, water from snowmelt, right, um, up in Mount Adams, Little Clickitat, Snowmelt and Simco's, right, so it melts at a different time and it creates these problems where management for the Little Clickitat is obviously gonna be different than the Big Clickitat. So you have temperature, um, precipitation, um, variation across a Ria that uh, um, creates certain problems, right? And then this was created um, for all of the um, Rias except for, I was unable to find anything for Ria twenty-nine. They created these planning units, which were basically the declaring the lead agency, and this was a process pursuing the funding and creating the projects, where all the stakeholders, uh, you know, they, they met together and they basically had a board. Um, I, I put at the bottom of this unit, like many others have seen to disappear, um, it's almost impossible to find information about these planning units, where they went, who they were composed of. Um, maybe this is something that could be, that could be pursued in the future, but um, this is about all we've got for the history of the Ria thirty planning units, um, who knows where it went. And basically, as a part of this planning unit, they, they initiated a lot of assessments and studies in the, in the early two thousands in Ria thirty, right? And a lot of that was focused on water quality, water storage and habitat for the, um, you know, the tributaries of the Clickitat and the Clickitat itself, right? And then for the sake of this um, presentation, and the, the Clickitat was, was doing well in two thousand and five, probably not as much today. And the Little Clickitat and Swell Creek, not so much, and presumably even worse today, given that we haven't done any water projects in the area. So, um, the problem that's going on with Swell Creek and Little Clickitat is that because they have that, one, they have the most water usage of any uh, sort of water body in the Ria. But um, because they have that Simco snowmelt, um, it creates these problems for temperature and water quality, right, so you get low flows in the summer, and also that water's being used, right, so it gets three or three D listed, um, and it just creates a bunch of problems that um, means that these areas are primed for basically water storage to au- augment flows, right? And that was the sort of, you know, the genesis of, of looking into water projects for this area. Um, in, in a lot of the documents, you'll find, you know, four kinds of water projects, water storage projects, which we're gonna get into. They aim to improve the um, you know, the quantity, but they can also, you know, do several things, they can, and, and help the temperature, they can help the quality, right, they can help habitat, you know, depending on, on where it's at or what you're doing, right? Uh, so we're gonna be focusing on water storage projects, and like I said, there's four kinds that you'll find in the literature, I'm sure there's a ton more, right, but documents even from five years ago sort of go over these four basic types of water storage projects, right? Which presumably, if any of this is done in the future, these would also be taken into consideration. First one is just basically aquifer recharge, where we drill shallow wells and then runoff water, you know, is sort of infiltrated back into the aquifer and, um, it's, I don't wanna say cheap and nasty, right, but it's sort of ineffective, um, you know, given um, the situation with the Little Clickitats. Um, cost effective, but not necessarily, you know, wouldn't necessarily have the greatest impact depending on um, the situation. Um, the next is aquifer storage and recovery. This is sort of a fancy method, but I've yet to see anyone actually implement it, presumably because it's expensive.
The White Salmon.
City White Salmon, had they have an ASR, an ASR well, wow. Well, there you go, they have an ASR well, um, it was actually considered by the city of Goldendale, um, yeah, around the two thousands. Um, they, it probably was a bad spot where it was.
Still talked about occasionally.
Still talked about occasionally, kicked, uh, kicked the can down the road for that one. It's a very sophisticated, very effective, um, so uh, aquifer recharge, you can recharge the aquifer, but you can't really store water, you're just sort of, I guess, refilling it, right, over and over again. Um, with ASR, you can replenish the aquifer while at the same time storing the water in there for future use. Um, the only problem is it probably needs to be treated, because you're pumping it directly back into the, into the aquifer. Of course, a dam, right, um, that's condit, um, very expensive habitat disruption, right, big project. Um, would yield a significant amount of water, you know, depending on the location, um, but you have to jump through a lot of hoops, right, to construct a dam. Right, and there was also sort of an off-channel method where basically we construct a reservoir, you know, off the channel, or we pump the water out and we create a wetland. Um, it's just uh, highly dependent on the location, um. And for the Little Clickitats, it was found that, you know, you can't really build a off-channel reservoir or create a wetland, given the location. You can't, uh, apparently, uh, an, an aquifer storage uh, uh, recharge, uh, recovery well was too expensive or not applicable. The, uh, enhanced groundwater recharge is sort of, didn't have the effectiveness, so figured, well, we could build a dam on a headwater tributary.
The off-channel impounded was realistic.
It was realistic.
Yes, and we did a full investigation off of Spring Creek, where you'll move it around, where Spring Creek drops down.
What were they gonna do, were they gonna construct a wetland or something, or?
No, we just construct a large reservoir that would retime the water, a third of it would go for fish, and then the rest of it could be used to, to, for irrigation.
Why was it on pursuit?
Uh, it, cuz it was so low on the trip, on, on the system.
Makes sense. So basically, the recommendation was to, uh, you know, further investigate the viability of a dam on Dry Creek, um, Idlewild Creek, and then Butler Creek, but that was sort of a, um, hypothetical, it, it really wasn't investigated, it said that there were significant, you know, habitat there that might be affected by a dam, but maybe somebody should look into it later, right? So that's basically what created this initial assessment, which was done, um, in, I wanna say like twenty fifteen, right, and it was sort of the forerunner to, so this is, so this project is the Dry Creek Butler Creek Refined Basin Yield Assessment. This is, I guess you'd call it the non-refined basin yield assessment. It was the first project which determines um, how much water basically you could store on reservoir sites on Dry Creek and Idlewild Creek, which are right up at the top of the Little Clickitat near Satis Pass and, and Brooks Memorial. So uh, water would be stored in, in, in a preferred location, depending on basically the um, how much water they could store, or, or, you know, how much research they could do on, on a good site. And this would augment the Little Clickitat during low flows, depending on a preferred release schedule. So it was either, it would either all be released sort of in the summer, or be released basically on demand for irrigation, which sort of lined up, um. Of course, that's something that would have to be, you know, talked about further, you know, in a, in another project, right, how that release schedule would work out. But basically, it was how much water could you store on these two sites, would it be feasible, right? Um, they're non-fish bearing, right, or at least non, uh, anandridus fish bearing, right, there's no or minimal habitat disruption, so you could construct a reservoir or a dam or something on these reaches and um, it could be realistic for augmenting Little Clickitat flow. So these are just more pictures of the sites, right, majority of it's owned by Western Pacific Timber. Um, several private landowners downstream, but wouldn't sort of be reaching into that territory. Um, they were steep and deep, and they were ideal for basically dams. So this was the results for Dry Creek, um, oop. I do ignore my, my red thing down there, I was supposed to get the cost per acre. But basically, it would yield nineteen hundred seventy-two Olympic swimming pools, right, of, of water, right, with uh, um, you know, a one point two million cubic yard earthwork uh, uh, volume dam would augment the Little Clickitat flows near Goldendale by eight hundred to eleven hundred percent, right? Compare that to Id- Idlewild Creek, which has sort of a minimal change in how, you know, costly and how big and, and the dam is, right, so you have a nine hundred thousand yard um, cubic uh, 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 yard volume of earthwork compared to a one point two million, right, well, you're getting four thousand acre feet of water from Dry Creek and you're getting twenty-one hundred acre feet of water from Idlewild Creek, right, and it would augment uh, Little Clickitat flows by four hundred fifty percent to six hundred percent. So it was determined, right, that it kind of makes sense, although economics weren't really discussed in the assessments, it probably better to go Dry Creek than Idlewild Creek, because it's gonna be relatively the same amount of money, a marginal difference to construct both dams, you're gonna get significantly more amount of water from Dry Creek than you will Idlewild Creek, right, and they also threw in the consideration of Butler Creek, which might be even more cost effective to construct a dam, right? Which then, but to the current project we have now, which commenced in twenty eighteen, um, with uh, Central Clickitat as sort of the lead contractor, who would be going out there and doing the sort of legwork. And they would monitor flow for the creeks for two years, and they would generate that yield assessment, which would in, further inform a reservoir location, which would be pursued in an additional project, right? So Butler Creek is again, another tributary in the Little Clickitat, um, right up there next to the other two creeks. Um, like I said, it initially wasn't considered because it thought there'd be some significant habitat disruption, but they uh, thought that maybe the um, reservoir construction would inevitably, you know, outweigh the damage to habitat upon further study, right? So this was the original timeline, you know, it was October twenty eighteen, and it was supposed to not take that long, it was supposed to eh, end around twenty twenty-one, it had an original budget of eighty thousand dollars, it was divided among various tasks. There was an amendment signed in December of twenty twenty extending it. Another amendment signed in March twenty twenty-two extending it, and then the amendment that y'all signed, uh, a couple of weeks ago, extending it again to twenty twenty-five, right, um. I guess the key is that although there were cost extensions, the budget hasn't changed, no more money's being allocated to it, that original eighty thousand dollars is sort of what we've had to work with this whole time. Right, so although it is frustrating and disappointing that we've had to keep changing the timeline, we're not getting any more money for it, right, so, and I'll discuss it later, um, or here. In, in the admin, the county hasn't billed to admin, um, in, in years, right, so all of that's being billed through the Conservation District and being reimbursed. There was originally seventy-five hundred dollars allocated to it with some costs shifted around, and then eventually shifted back to the Conservation District, after it was determined that the county simply doesn't bill to it anymore, right, it was just simple admin by county staff. Um, coordinating with ecology, coordinating with the Conservation District. And there was the simple, you know, the data collection, so stream flow monitoring, site visits, there's forty-two K originally allocated, some more money was shifted around. This task has been fully completed, it's ninety-nine percent complete, right, you know, on the ecology's website, it's, it's essentially done. The only thing that is remaining is the actual assessment, the refined basin yield assessment, right? So there was originally twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to the task, and then sort of in the last amendment that y'all signed, all the leftover money from all the previous tasks were all dumped back into the assessment. That way, Central Clickitat Conservation District, who is generating the assessment, will have more money to either generate it in-house, or generate it through a consultant. Right, and this needs to be completed by March of, of twenty twenty-five, right, and this is the, you know, the titular assessment that would inform a decision on what to do in a future project, right? And then this last task was outreach, which was originally allocated, um, five thousand dollars. It was eliminated through amendment two, presumably because the, all the Ria committees just disappeared. Um, I'm still unsure as to why that happened, um. And then, simple reasons for delay, um, it began twenty eighteen, it was only supposed to last three years, amendment, amendment, amendments. Um, there were significant delays, um, due to staff turnover by the Conservation District, and then additionally, I wasn't here during COVID, but I hear it really messed things up.
There, there was also uh, where the C, CKCD set up the monitoring stations for the flow system, that got blown out, and so when that got blown out, you lose a whole year.
So originally, it was gonna be two years of stream flow data collection, but uh, luckily, the stream flow data collection has been completed, right, but unfortunately, there was significant delay since the commencement of the project in twenty eighteen. Again, um, it's a little disappointing, right, you know, you read a document from two thousand and four, right, you know, about augmenting, you know, Little Clickitat low flow and twenty years have gone by and very little has been done to accomplish it, right, and, and hopefully, you know, like I said, the end goal was to help the Little Clickitat. Right, it's now more necessary than it was twenty years ago, when all these assessments were being conducted. So hopefully, you know, we can sort of regroup and retool and finish this project and then um, maybe pursue a project that will actually realize the vision of the stakeholders at the time twenty years ago, and this was all being initiated. That's all I got, any questions?
So, um, through Central Clickitat.
Mike.
Central Clickitat Conservation District Department of Ecology in Clickitat County, do you have other partners? Fish and Wildlife, Yakima Nation.
Those are, so I am, I am unaware about how close those stakeholders were at the commencement of the project, but as it sits right now, twenty twenty-four, those are the, those are the three.
Right.
They're the three groups.
Right, and I agree with the absence of those boards and how they disappeared. Um, because that was the design back in the day, when the Governor Tim Recovery Team created these, those crucial boards with dedicated volunteers and people with expertise on those boards would review these before they ever came this far to the commissioner, so I'm sorry to hear they didn't go through that vetting process that was, that's very valuable.
They all did go through the vetting process.
Through the.
The first dry, dry Idlewild went through Wyro thirty, the uh, refined basin yield went through the Wyro thirty uh, watershed committee.
Your documentation. Your documentation is missing.
No, I mean, it's, it, it, the documentation is very scant already. I just can't find any record of these, of these advisory committees. Unless they're in a box hiding somewhere.
See, that's probably it. It's Clickattack County. Everything's in paper form in boxes in some shipping container somewhere.
Yeah, I think it was twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen when the YR groups, um, kind of fizzled out as the last bit because ecology wasn't providing any more money for us to, sorry. Ecology wasn't providing any more dollars for us to manage those committees. Um, the work on those committees had pretty much been completed. Uh, the plans were completed, uh, the conservation districts, all the, all the, the groups were working on the plans that had been completed for the YRs. Um, talking a little bit about the, uh, three oh three D list, uh, for temperature. Every single stream that's been reviewed east of the Cascades is on the three oh three D list for temperature. Um, it just comes down to what they consider, they set a, an arbitrary number that everything falls into. Uh, originally speaking, the three oh three D list was supposed to be for the most toxic waters in the United States. And those things that needed immediate cleanup. And what they did is, is they kept changing the, uh, the standards to the point where everything gets on it. And so now how do you pick which ones that you're gonna focus on?
So since two thousand nineteen on, did we keep the in-stream flows on the little click, click attack? Did we keep records and measurement of those or did Central Clickattack?
So, so the, well, the flow monitoring program on, on the central, on YR thirty is continued on until this day. Uh, ecology continued to pay for it up until two, I, two, three years ago. And now Central is still doing it with their base funds.
We funded a little bit of it, I might remind you.
And we used to, we used to, uh, when ecology paid for it, our staff would go out and help. And that was part of the match program for it. But, uh, as far as I know, it's still going on, but I know that there's been, um, gaps here and there because they just didn't have staff.
Question for staff. Do you know of any projects in the state where they've completed this work? And found some company willing to build a reservoir and manage the reservoir and the water flow and, or, or is everybody just like us working on a pipe dream that?
I think it's a lot more like that.
I, I, I fully believe it's a lot. I, I fully believe this is a giant waste of time.
Yeah. No, there, there's actually, there's actually a bunch of them that have been created, um, thousands upon thousands of acres of land.
We, we could do the research and, and we can give you a solid, as opposed to opinions, we, we can do some research.
And irrespective of these things, there was a vision that was, you know, created by these groups that, you know, you know, ideally should be realized and the whole point of this is sort of retooling and regrouping things that have gone sort of by the wayside, right? That could and should be picked up again, right? For, you know, the resilience of, you know, natural resources.
I, I think the idea behind it to lower water temperatures, better fish habitat, more water for irrigation, blah, blah, blah. It's all good, good stuff. Do I see the feasibility of some private company building a dam and controlling water rights out of that dam? Let alone just flushing them down a creek unless they're getting money from the state to do so. I just, I just don't see it happening, but I could be wrong.
Well, and for me.
It's a business I would do.
I still need to see a bigger picture. Um, you know, we have a lot of valued partners that have done a lot more work than we have and have a vested interest in all those. And anything you touch upstream, you're touching downstream. And if you start reserving water during specific times that Yakima Nation or Fish and Wildlife hasn't certified, um, we could change.
I was gonna say, we've been gotten to that. Is the tribe gonna be in favor of flooding valleys? And, and I just, uh, again, I, I see it tied up in court forever and just never getting done, but that's just me.
I look back in history and I think man's best plan.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, ah, what did we do?
And now we're up there ripping out Beaver dams because they're bad for habitat and we're gonna create a big giant Beaver Dam. So, yeah. Mother nature has a plan. Man screws it up.
So I want to say thank you again to the commissioners for your guidance. Uh, as a reminder, this was requested during our last board update. So we went.
No, it was very informative. Yeah.
Yep. No, this was.
And thank you, Jake, for, for adding into this. So, all right, that's it.
Yeah, I appreciate you. That was like a thousand pages of documents.
We all learned a lot. Thank you.
Anything else? Good?
Okay.
So that was the, uh, well, I would say that was the best update I've had on this project, but that is the only update I've had on this project in three and a half years. So I appreciate it.
That's an easy bar to jump.
That's an easy bar to jump. There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, you, you wouldn't believe how hard it was to get this, uh, for the first two and a half years of it anyway. So.
Uh, doesn't, uh, when you brought it up two years ago, didn't staff provide you with the, uh, reports? There's a multi, you know, there are a thousand pages for him to create that.
Was. That's what staff provided me with.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour.
That is perfect timing.
Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see you back here at one o'clock. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. Welcome back to the Clickjack County Board of Commissioners Weekly Meeting. Uh, we're gonna open again here at one o'clock and we're gonna wait just a couple of seconds. We see Mr. Christopher coming up the elevator. That lunch went fast. I had meetings and it was like. I love the hour and a half. No, it's gone. Cause everybody calls you and finds you on your lunch. Yeah. There he is. Yeah, we, we should have handled one last thing and then adjourned. Did you get these too? Good. So we are live and all three commissioners are present. So I think.
This one's breathing hard.
Good for you. Um, I think the topic was the credit card used by departments, the resolution for credit cards. I wanted to revisit that if we could and, um, just after we did that resolution, uh, and approved that resolution to ask the treasurer to go ahead for departments. Um, I had a, a meeting with the treasurer noted that, um, I had to apologize and I had made an error. Um, I should have reached out to both sides before I made a decision. And that's one of my rules and I, and I hadn't done it. And the treasurer is well aware of the need for the credit cards in the departments. And he explained several different processes that he had been through, several different processes that he is currently working on. And I think he's duly noted our request that we would like that to move forward and get those for those departments as soon as we can. So, uh, in the spirit of friendship between electeds, I would like to, um, table that resolution and understand that we had a conversation and, um, hope that he would read, reach out to me first before I made a formal statement about something I'd like, he'd like me to do.
So I guess if, uh, a question I have is that if he is working towards setting it up so that we can take credit cards, which is I think what you said. Then why does the resolution have to be tabled? Because it would be the same as, tomorrow's the same as today. He would still be working towards.
I just don't.
Now, when that happens is a different story. It might take six months, three months, a year and a half. I don't know. But at least it, it says where we stand and now we're waiting on him to come up with the best avenue to do so.
Yeah. And for me, looking back, I would rather not take a stand. I would, I would rather uh, ridge across the aisle and ask how things are going and what I could do to help get it moving. And I think that's where we're at. And I think he explained several things to me that were blockades that they're working through. Um, and he understands, uh, and is moving on that process. And I think those departments will get their credit cards and he understands what the board wants. But I don't feel it's gonna take an official resolution stand for me to have him do that.
Well, that is the motion on the table. So I would imagine if it was being rescinded, there'd be, a need to be a motion to rescind.
Can you expound on what those issues are from having it happen?
I am gonna have, I'm gonna have to have you talk to him, Jake. Uh, there, there were some complicated issues and there's different reasons in different departments and how they're managed and the way he needs to set those up. And I would rather you ask him than me tell you something incorrect, but I understood him and I heard him.
So I guess the, the other question would be is, I'm, I understand where Commissioner Christopher's coming from. The way it was written was is this is the policy we would like to see move forward. Um, but no timelines.
No timelines.
There were no requirements. It was, this is, this is the official policy, what we would like.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, that, it was strategically worded. So it did not put timelines, pressures, uh, or anything else. It just said that our departments will work with the treasurer to facilitate um, with no timelines. And Jake even asked, is there a timeline on this? I said, no. Cause I don't know the procedures that he's gotta do.
Correct.
Or what supplemental budgets might be needed or what credit card processing costs are or whatever. That's all gonna have to get brought before this board, but the first step is this board saying, we want to accept credit cards, which is the motion that was turned into our resolution.
And I think the, the other piece of that is, um, the way it was worded, it was, it was direction to our staff
Correct.
to work with the, uh, with the treasurer, because we could have, say there was a department head that's like, I don't wanna take credit cards. I, I got my way. I wanna do it. And our direction is actually to our people to be like, no, you will take credit cards.
Right. And that was, that was another question Jake had is were you giving directive to another elected? And I, no.
Okay.
I don't have the authority to give directive. I have the, I have the ability to set policy for departments. Uh, not for offices. Uh, and that's all that motion was, was to set a credit card policy to work towards in our managed departments.
Which, you know, for three and a half years now, this has been the goal. When we first came in, it was one of the things that was discussed, uh, multiple times was.
Multiple times.
Multiple times. It was, yeah, this doesn't make sense.
Well, and I can, I can understand your views then that the resolution was directed at the departments. And we're setting policy from the Board of Community Commissioners. So if someone is hired eventually or if someone does not want to do that, then we can refer back to policies that, you know, it's the policy of the commissioners that our departments use credit cards.
Facilitate being able to accept credit cards. And, and yes, I guess part of this is when for three and a half years, the public says, why don't you even accept credit cards? And I have to answer them, that's a good question. Um, now I can say I have a resolution that does allow us to set credit cards. We just need to set it up.
Was it a resolution or was it a motion?
The, the original was a motion. We were working on a resolution. The motion was to draft and sign a resolution.
Okay. I was on the boat at the time though. I didn't, wasn't looking at it in front of me.
It sounded like you were at a daycare facility or something. There's a lot of kids screaming in the background last week.
Wasn't a daycare facility. I was doing market research for that.
Yeah.
At a childcare facility. No, back, back to topic at hand. It was a motion to take the initial step. Now I understand there will be potentially costs, legwork, time constraints. Um, yeah, it may not get done for a year. I don't know. I know it hasn't been done in the last three and a half by doing it the other way. Um, which is the way you're recommending we go back to. And I can't support that. Cause it, it's been three and a half years.
Jake, where are you?
No, I, I, I mean, if we made a motion to direct staff to write a resolution, then we could say this is the official policy of the county, that the county will. That's been the direction to staff. I wanna see that, how that's written before I sign it.
Correct.
And when that does get written, I would like to see, have it sent to the treasurer for his review as well as the PA.
Okay.
That, would that work for you, Lauren?
Yeah, well, I, I think we should look at it first before we send it over there because we may, I guess I'd say there's a lot of uh, things that can be taken in a word. You know, the word should or shall. And I would hate to send over something that may inflame a situation. If, if we draft it, we look at it, we make sure the wording is what our intentions is. We're directing staff, our staff to, to, and then once we're good with the wording, then sending it over on file. But I, I do think we need to look at it before we send it over.
Yeah, I'd like to see it because I, I also, I am in favor of it if we're directing staff and we're creating something of policy that's researchable in the future, that that's what the Board of Commissioners want. To serve the public better, we're going to have credit cards.
Work towards it anyway.
Yeah.
Um, I might be able to. Uh, the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution instructing all departments that receive public payments, set up the ability to accept credit card. As nothing for elected officials.
Anything else on the agenda?
Cause I would imagine this will be a much deeper discussion. It'll be the treasurer having to work with IT, having to come back to us, get budget authority to do whatever the software program is to do it.
And there could be multiple ones because of.
Well, there, we, we might be going out to public bid because there's so many of them. I don't. It's one thing if you're just doing one department. If you're doing a countywide operation, you know, there needs to be, there needs to be official policies in place for credit card policy. You know, if a card's bad, if it's charged back. I mean, there's gonna have to be policies set. So that, I mean, there's many steps. This is just step one.
Isn't, isn't there something that does accept credit cards?
Something? What do you mean?
Is it the building? Is it? I thought there.
Building does take credit cards.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then we should already have all those other steps as policies there.
One would hope. Butter, butter around here. You never know. So it's something I, I like to address issues before they fall out of the sky, land on my face and start to wiggle. Um, so while we're working on this, it would be nice to double check. Is all I'm asking.
Good.
Good. I don't have anything else for the good of the order.
I don't let somebody wants to volunteer to go to this insurance conference.
Nope.
I will happily entertain offers. I might even buy you a steak dinner.
Nope.
You know, I like the board and I.
The win is it?
Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I can't leave.
I really enjoy the knowledge and the fact finding I get out of it. But it is so dry. It's just, it's, it's, it's so dry that it takes a whole different being to get like into it.
You're an insurance geek, you know.
I'm a money geek. So it's, uh, it, it, like I said, I, I, but there's some of the conversations that just do not pertain to us. Um, but yeah, I know it's, it's not a fun filled. They do have a trivia. Um, they do have a trivia and I was the reason our table lost last year. Cause believe it or not, Oregon has more grapes than California, which surprised me. Alrighty then.
Madam Chair, uh, with that great piece of knowledge.
Great piece of knowledge.
Yeah, great piece of knowledge. Uh, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Noting that.
Uh do we have?
All three commissioners, well, two commissioners will be attending Casey Pita.
Oh, well, all three commissioners will be attending Casey Pita. Oh, no, you're not going, I forgot. Wait, why aren't you going?
I have the um Seek slash Pad meeting tonight. I missed the last one.
Oh.
So it's like we just finished up this and we have to decide what we're doing with Fair. Um. And so it's kind of pertinent and I'll be the one probably running the meeting tonight, so. If if I'm not there, it probably don't happen.
Is that Seek, the same Seek or is it a difference?
No, we're an umbrella of Seek. It's uh, so we shouldn't refer to it as Seek. We'll call it Goldendale Community and Ridge. But it is under Seek.
Right, under Seek's five oh one C three.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, uh Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting noting that uh two commissioners will be present at the uh Casey Pita Board Meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Other than the minute we say adjourn, we're gonna think it's something else to talk about.
No, we won't.
And then we'll have to wait a week.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys done signing, by the way?
Yep.
I am, yes, thank you.